We're gonna let. Yeah, it's, I just fixed it.
Okay.
It was like.
Is who? No, I was in DC.
I'll do that, I swear.
Is Jody right here today? And this is his seat, right? Now put your bootleg in there too.
Rory, can I get you to join us?
Tonight, how are you?
I know you're used to being out there. We need you up here now.
All right, come on, you gotta hurry up. But you can't play with that kitty buzz if you're gonna be here, okay? Because it makes.
That's put my name on sign.
Sit down, must I?
Yeah, we'll send to tonight's Planning Commission meeting. Thank you all for being here and welcome to those viewing from home. First thing I'd like to do is welcome our two newest Planning Commission members. Mr. Heaton, thank you. Mr. Stolzenberg, Stalzen? Stolzenberg.
Yup.
Thank you for being here and welcome and I hope, I'm sure we'll see a lot of each other in the upcoming months until this comprehensive plan is complete. The first thing that we do in this evening, and I'll just kind of go over this a little bit, is we do commissioners' reports as their first thing. You won't have any tonight probably unless you just have something you're dying to say and we'll give you an opportunity to do that. But these are times where you report back on the subcommittees and other commissions that you serve on as a part of the Planning Commission, which the three of us need to talk about after this meeting, so we can get that settled. And then we have other reports and then we hear from our public.
Turn off our cell phone.
And sometimes it does seem like that from the public, there's no one here. So that was kind of appropriate timing. So at this time, Ms. Dowell, do you have a report?
I do, actually.
Okay. Then we'll start on this end.
Sure.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yeah, I met with the Parks and Rec group and I think it was September 13th. They are very, very busy, lots going on. I won't walk you through everything because it's quite a bit. But the thing that I'm most piqued by is the skate park, the skateboard park. We are hoping to have the grand opening sometime before the end of the year. There is one little issue that we've got with that and that is parking. We don't have a place to park that's directly adjacent to the skate park. So people are actually gonna have to park near the ballparks and walk across the new bridge, which is now in place, across the railroad tracks to get there. So that is really the highlight of everything that's happening.
Is the bridge open?
I believe it is. Ms. Creasy?
I'm not sure.
It's been up for over a month.
It's been up, yeah. I haven't seen anybody go over it and I haven't done that myself, but that doesn't mean that it isn't, so.
Okay. I was just wondering because they still have that one lane blocked off, so I wanted to see.
I don't know.
Okay, okay. Well, maybe we'll can get an answer on that at some point. Mr. Stolzenberg, do you have anything to report?
I don't, thank you.
No report.
Fantastic. Ms. Dowell?
Um, so. The CDBG Task Force met on Tuesday, October 2nd. So Tuesday, October 2nd, I attended the CDBG Task Force Work Session from 12 to 1:00 PM in the NDS Conference Room. The Task Force reviewed the current CDBG application and scoring rubric. We discussed questions that seemed redundant on the application and also on the scoring rubric and set clear guidelines and expectations of the applications for the upcoming session. We also felt that it was, it would be more beneficial to the Task Force and applicant to meet with Tierra on a one-on-one basis as a requirement to be able to apply for CDBG funds instead of holding one group mandated meeting. We felt like that would cut down on some of the confusion and also the back and forth time of submitting information. Comments are currently being taken into consideration and the application and scoring tool are being revised. We have a meeting coming up soon, but the date has not been determined.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm hoping that we're gonna finalize all these committees assignments since we've had such a turnover. For those that don't know, Ms. Dowell was also reappointed and we are happy for that. And Mr. LaHondro, who had an emergency that couldn't make it this evening. So we were pretty happy to hear that as well. My commissioner's report is based off of the Long Range Transportation Plan, which we're gonna hear this evening. I attended the NPO Technical Committee Meeting in September and, but we're gonna hear a better presentation than I can give you from them this evening, right after our public hearing. And then the next Long Range Transportation Meeting, NPO Technical Meeting, is gonna be in November. And then we are getting ready to gear up and for the CIP and have meetings. So stay tuned for more on that. That should be, I think it's probably gonna be a little bit later this year as they are looking.
I know the school board portion will be meeting October 25th.
Okay. The second part of that is we have had a great turnout on our surveys. I think the, we extended the deadline from last week until today, so I guess you have till midnight today. If you haven't filled out the survey or you know someone, or you haven't met the mayor's challenge of getting 10 people you know to fill out the survey, I saw that this weekend on Facebook, then I, if you haven't done that, get on that because that's a lot of people to get to do, fill out the survey. And then I know that Mr. Mayor Walker, Mr. Bellamy went around and got some paper copies filled out, so that was fantastic. And I attended the Buford Middle School Fall Festival, which was fantastic. If you haven't ever done that, I suggest you do it. Now that I have a kid there and I wish I'd had surveys there, so I, it was an epic fail on my part, so I apologize for that. But it is a wonderful event. And that is all for my reports. Ms., you have a university report?
Sure. Yeah, I put a couple of things together.
Great.
Yeah, just two things and then another one that popped in my head when you were talking about committees and such. First one is just, this is more like just what's going on at UVA.
Right.
For, for the general community. The university just now owns Cavalier Inn and its parking lot, the former Italian Villa and the IMRec Outdoor Recreational Facility, which is also vacant. I think demolition of those buildings, I said, will begin soon, but I think it already has begun and should be complete by December of this year. Past that, there's no real timeline for what's next. And then as some of you may have heard, we have a new president at UVA. And his formal inauguration is gonna be Friday, October 19th for President Jim, James Ryan. And it's on the lawn. The event will have academic procession, swearing in, and a community reception on the North Plaza, the Rotunda. It's free and open to the public. There's like an optional registration that you can find details about at virginia.edu and more details about the event itself. And then in conjunction with that, President Ryan's a big runner and he thought it would be a good idea to organize a community event and there is a Community 5K Run Walk called the Community Bridges 5K Run Walk the next morning on October 20th. And all the proceeds from that race will benefit the Center for Nonprofit Excellence, which aids more than 280 local nonprofit organizations. Race is at, starts at 9:00 AM in front of the Chemistry Building on McCormick Road, so on grounds, but then it goes, I think, well into the city and back. And registration's required and you can also find that information somewhere on the UVA homepage. It's a really long URL that I'm not going to repeat here. And then the final thing, since you mentioned the committees, we have, you know, at UVA that, that has representatives of the Planning Commission as well as the city staff and then the county staff and planning commissions, we have our, what we call our Master Planning Council. And the next meeting for that is November 7th on, that's a Wednesday. So if you don't have that invite yet, I can get that to you.
Mr. Mitchell is your rep for that, so.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make everyone aware that that's happening. That's an opportunity for us to discuss UVA planning projects and stuff.
Great.
Not sure of the agenda at this point.
Can you make sure Mr. Mitchell was on that list?
Yeah.
Thank you so much, appreciate that. And I went out of order, I was so excited to give my report. So Ms. Creasy, could you go next, please?
No problem. As you all noted, the survey closes up today. We did receive quite a few paper copies, so we had a lot of staff folks today entering those into an Excel database. So we have the Survey Monkey information and we have that and we have Bob, you all met Bob at the last meeting, working with the data to figure out different ways of being able to present that. And so our goal is to have at least analysis of some of it to you all on Friday so that you all will have that to look at over the weekend in time for the work session, which we're gonna assume is next week. But you all will be talking about that following this meeting, just to clarify, work sessions moving forward. So a lot of work going on with the survey. A lot of people responded to the survey, which is really, really good. And, you know, we probably will have a few more as the hours move on here. Noting work sessions, I usually announce the next ones that we have, but I think the group will be having some discussion about that, so I will leave that until we have that discussion. And that's all I have.
Yes, and so just, we have a few more, but just so, we're gonna have a quick discussion about the doodle poll we sent out. We have until, as in our last meeting, decided to do, we've got just a few weeks left to get our final draft to City Council for their review for the December deadline. So we'll be talking about that right after our last agenda item and just finalize some dates. At this time, and we are going to hear from matters to be presented by the public, not on the formal agenda. If you are here for the Stonehenge PUD Final Subdivision, this is your time to speak on that. There will not be a public hearing on that particular item. So matters to be presented, does anyone, is anyone signed up? Is there anyone that would like to speak to matters to be presented not on the formal agenda?
Hi, Sean Tubbs, the Piedmont Environmental Council. Just a couple of comments, just mostly wanted to welcome the new members to the Planning Commission. I don't know you, Mr. Heaton, but I look forward to seeing what you have to say. I have some familiarity with Rory here, but the rest of you, I've been coming to these meetings since 2007. Now I'm in a different role and I'm hoping that you guys look back at, of course, Mr. Mitchell was here back then. All of the things that have gone on before, please help build upon them as we go do new things. And of course, I did also come up here to also say that there is one more step on the Long Range Transportation Plan that that's coming up. There's an open house, the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission is having that meeting on October 17th. It's an open house from 5:30 to 7:30. Long Range Transportation Plan is something that might not necessarily come up here a lot, but it does, it is something that feeds into everything else. You guys are the Planning Commission. This city is one that has many boards and commissions, most of which you all serve on, but this is the one that's actually codified in state code. And of course, you're doing your comprehensive plan and all these things fit in together. And so I would encourage you to look at that. I know you're not here to answer questions, but I am really curious about that Master Planning Committee that Mr. Mitchell is on. I'm curious to know if that's open to the public or if that's something that is perhaps not open to the public, because I think that's a really key area, because I just want to draw your attention to what's known as the Area B areas. This is where the city, the county, and the University of Virginia come together. And there are, there is this Planning and Coordination Committee that I believe some of you might be on, the Technical Committee that's part of that. But this is an area where sometimes these, there should be more dialogue and conversation, especially as we look at some of the edge areas like Fontaine Avenue, where the city has a streetscape that ends at the county border. Meanwhile, right across the border, there is a research center owned by the University of Virginia, which is increasing at this, which is, which has potential plans to increase its area. Now, there might not necessarily be any projects that come before this body, but you guys are the planners and you guys should know what's going on. So I would just encourage you to think about how all this stuff fits into a greater whole, hopefully as we all work towards making a better community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to matters by the public not on the formal agenda? And I will close this portion of the meeting and we will move to the consent agenda. We have one item on the consent agenda, which is a final subdivision for Stonehenge PUD. And I will just disclose that we had some questions in the pre-meeting regarding the, the approval of this or this being on the consent agenda, which spoke to the blasting concern from the neighborhood and how this related to that. And it's our understanding that the applicant for this has said there would not be blasting any longer and whether this matched the approved site plan that came before us a year ago.
Yeah.
So, and it's my understanding that staff has deemed that this does meet that site plan. So at this time, is there any other questions on that or would anyone like to pull this item from the consent agenda? Then I will entertain a motion. So for you two new guys, here's how this works. I move, we approve the consent agenda, consent agenda as.
Presented.
As presented, sorry, I lost my word. And then somebody will go. So I'll do it first, okay? I move, we approve this consent agenda as presented.
Second.
And we have a second.
Pretty difficult.
Yeah, there you go. It feels good, Ed. Okay. I typically don't make motions. I let you all do that, but I don't think there's anything from including me too. Okay. But since we're learning here. Anyway, so we will vote by voice acclamation. So all in favor of that approval? Voice by aye?
Aye. Aye.
And those opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. So this is the point of our meeting where we are at the joint meeting and Ms. Creasy, are we gonna have?
We have three councilors coming, but it's not quite six o'clock, so.
So we will adjourn for the next six minutes or until council gets here.
(pause)
You ready? Thank you, Chair, and welcome to commissioners.
I'm Matt O'Leary, I'm a city planner with Neighborhood Development Services. So I will try not to repeat everything that the Chair just said, but commissioners, tonight, you have a rezoning and an S U P request for a development located at, on, and around 918 Nassau Street. On April 10th, 2018, the Planning Commission held a joint public hearing for the rezoning of the subject properties from R2 to Highway Corridor with proffered development conditions. And accompanying S U P requests for the same properties plus Tax Map 61 Parcel 79.16, 79.18, and 79.19. 918 Nassau Street, and a portion of Tax Map 61 Parcel 79, subject properties. The rezoning petition proposes a change in zoning from the existing R2, two-family residential to Highway, H W Highway Corridor with proffered development conditions. The proffered conditions include, I, maximum height of buildings, and any structures located on the property shall not exceed 35 feet in height, where height is the vertical distance measured perpendicular, perpendicularly from grade from the highest point on such building or structure. And two, future land uses. The land uses permitted on the subject properties are found in the H W Corridor Section 34-796 Use Matrix, but prohibits the following: bed and breakfast, home stays, B&amp;B-ins, amusement centers, art galleries, auditoriums, automotive services, banks/financial institutions, health clinics, private clubs, data centers, dry cleaning establishments, elementary schools, high schools, hotels, motels, laundromats, libraries, movie theaters, municipal buildings, music halls, offices, outdoor storage, public recreational facilities, fast food restaurants, full-service restaurants, taxi stands, transit facilities, home improvement centers, pharmacies, shopping centers, retail stores over 4,001 square feet, and laboratories. And three, affordable housing contingent upon approval of residential density on-site. Fifteen percent of the floor area ratio of the residential square footage of the project will be available for rent on-site. For rent, affordable units shall rent at a rate making the units affordable to households with incomes not more than 80% of the area median income for a period of not more than 15 years. The subject properties are further identified, and we've already read those, so I'm not gonna make you go through that again. The subject property is approximately .8 acres. The land use plan calls for low-density residential, and the comprehensive plan specifies density no greater than 15 units per acre. I'll remind you, that is the current approved 2013 comprehensive plan. The second application on these parcels is SP 18-00004, 918 Nassau Street, Hogwaller Farm Development. Justin Schimpf, Schimpf Engineering, on behalf of Charles Hurt and Shirley Fisher Landowners, have submitted an application seeking approval of a special use permit for a portion of Tax Map 61 Parcel 79, Tax Map 61 Parcel 79.16, 79.17, 79.18, and 79.19. 918 Nassau Street, subject properties. The S U P application proposes a density of 32 dwelling units per acre, per City Code Section 34-740. The applicant is requesting a rezoning. See petition ZM-18-0001, and an S U P for the proposed development of 18 one-bedroom and 12 two-bedroom units, split between two three-story buildings, for a total of 30 dwelling units. The development is being proposed as an urban farm, and will accommodate a 1,280-square-foot greenhouse and a 600-square-foot retail farm store. Additional parking, farm sheds not to exceed 600 square feet, and agricultural fields supporting the development are proposed on an adjacent 7.52-acre county parcel. The subject property are approximately .94 acres, and has road frontage on Nassau Street. The land use plan calls for low-density residential. The comprehensive plan specifies density no greater than 15 units per acre. You can find all information pertaining to these requests, www charlesville.org, under Neighborhood Development Services. Whew. Are you ready?
Thank you, Chair, and welcome, new commissioners. I'm Matt O'Leary, I'm a city planner with Neighborhood Development Services. So I will try not to repeat everything that the Chair just said, but commissioners, tonight, you have a rezoning and an S U P request for a development located at, on, and around 918 Nassau Street. On April 10th, 2018, the Planning Commission held a joint public hearing for the rezoning of the subject properties from R2 to Highway Corridor with proffered development conditions, and an accompanying S U P request for the same properties plus Tax Map 61 Parcel 79.16. That parcel's already zoned highway. To increase density from the byright zero dwelling units per acre to 32 dwelling units per acre. During the public hearing, the Planning Commission expressed concerns with the county portion of the development, and did not want to take any action until the county granted or denied a rezoning petition. The applicant requested and received a referral by the Planning Commission until the county portion of the development status was resolved. The Planning Commission also requested Albemarle County be aware of the city's concerns with the project. On April 18th, 2018, the Planning Commission sent a letter to their course, to their counterparts with the county Planning Commission. The following are points the city Planning Commission conveyed to the county. Point one, both the city and county portion of the development will only be accessible by the way of city streets. Increased traffic and an increase of large vehicles, large trucks, and equipment for farming and tree transplanting are a concern. Point two, the city would like to see this area, would like to see access for all residents to Morris Creek and Rebus Park. The opportunity for public access easements and new trails need to be considered with this application. The bicycle and pedestrian plan calls for a shared-use path along Morris Creek in this location. The point three, the housing component of the development is very important to the city. Unattended consequences of the zoning, unintended consequences of zoning the city portion of the development could lead to the loss of future housing stock that current R2 zone allows. A rezoning on the city side to Highway Corridor currently requires a special use permit for any density. Of concern is any future development that utilizes byright commercial or retail uses without incorporating a housing component. On September 12th, 2018, Albemarle Board of Supervisors approved an ordinance to rezone 7.52 acres from light industrial to rural areas. The following are key positions of the ordinance that was approved. One, the property will be developed in general accord with the conceptual plan titled T M P 07700-00-00-02000. Hogwaller Farm dated January 16th, 2018, and last revised 6/27/18. Two, a 100-foot riparian buffer will be preserved from the top of Morris Creek's bank and signed. Uses on the site are restricted to the uses presented in Section 10.2, 3679, 21, and 27. And finally, any structures within the flood hazard overlay district shall not exceed 600 square feet of aggregate improved space. I'm gonna skip the next part, because the Chair went over that, which is mainly the advertisement. I will read this. That portion was just listing the, the uses in the proffered language. In addition to the rezoning, the S U P for the stated parcel with the addition of Tax Map 61 Parcel 79.16, which is already zoned Highway Corridor, is also being considered. The S U P application is being requested to accommodate density for 18 one-bedroom and 12 two-bedroom units, which would be in two apartment buildings, for a total of 30 dwelling units. In addition to the staff report and comments you will hear tonight during the public hearing, the Commission may wish to keep the following residential density in mind during the discussion. Under current R2 zoning, the subject properties could accommodate approximately four to five detached single-family homes. Each could have up to four unrelated. Or three to four attached single-family homes, things like a duplex. And each unit within the attached single-family could have up to four unrelated. If the zoning is changed to Highway Corridor, no single-family detached or attached homes would be permitted. That use is not allowed in the Highway Corridor. The, the byright density in the Highway Corridor is zero. If the subject properties are rezoned and S U P is approved, the density would be 32 dwelling units per acre, giving you 30 units. So current zoning, you're looking at four to, four to eight units. Highway Corridor, you'd look at zero units. Or Highway Corridor with S U P, you look at roughly 30 units. In addition, in addition to the comments presented in the staff report, additional comments from the public were received by staff after the report was finished and posted. Any email staff received was forwarded to Planning Commission and City Council. These comments raised concerns with development in the floodplain. The plan as presented would not be realistic as it relates to urban farming and producing food. The development would be out of character with the neighborhood. It does not match the existing comp plan. The zoning in this area should not change until Belmont goes through a small area plan process. The affordable units being proposed are not significant, and concerns about wetlands and traffic were also raised in these most recent emails. For convenience, on page 15 of the rezoning staff report, you'll find a summary of the standard of review for the project and the rezoning. And before I conclude, I do want to hand out two things. One, the, the motions have been changed. The Attorney's Office has reviewed the motions, and these are the motions y'all will need to use during that. And then during the pre-meeting, there, and the applicant during his presentation, and during all questions, can address this, too, but the question about critical slopes came up. And after the pre-meeting while you're on here, I just wanted to verify, and I wanted to clarify this. There are no critical slopes as defined in the zoning ordinance on this site. There are slopes over 25%, but those are related to subdivision. If you had slopes over 25% that you wanted to build public infrastructure, public streets, that, that's where the Planning Commission would have the authority to, to review it. Under the subdivision definition of critical slopes, that's where they, an applicant would need a waiver if they wanted to build in those slopes from City Council. So the slopes that are there are, are not part of infrastructure. They are slopes over 25%, but because they're not for a road or anything, you, you can disturb those 25% slopes. And I have some of that, I'll give y'all. And with that, I will have you to answer questions or clarifying comments.
So this time, we're just gonna ask questions. We're not into discussion or opinion yet. But do you have any more questions for staff before we bring up the applicant for their presentation? And then we'll have time for the applicant, questions of the applicant at that time.
You, you recommended, on page 13 and 14, you listed a number of recommendations. But I think the only recommendation that you listed that was proffered is the fact that they will not exceed 35 feet. The other recommendations were not proffered. Is that right? Page 13 and 14.
Are we talking the rezoning report or the staff, the S U P report?
We're talking the special use permit report, I believe. You talked about setpacts and a number, a number of recommendations.
If you're referring to the, I mean, those are conditions staff. If, if the S U P was granted, these are some conditions staff would recommend in the Commission.
The 35 feet you mentioned, but that was proffered. The height, the height of the, the height of the greenhouse, and how this height of the store, those were proffered, right?
The height of the building is proffered, not the...
The height of the building, yeah.
Correct.
So that was proffered or was not?
The height of the apartment building is proffered.
Was proffered. But the height of the greenhouse and the height of the, the retail store...
Farm store were not proffered. Those were S U P conditions for consideration.
Any other questions? We can always ask him to come back up after the applicant, if you'd like, before we go into public comment, but are there any other questions? Thank you, Mr. App... You're gonna stick around?
Oh, yeah, I'll be here all night.
Okay. No, no, you won't. Or you'll be alone. Would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Can I get the projector here? It should be coming up.
So we can go down to the... We can go down there and look at it, if you guys can.
I'll be right back.
During the public hearing, the Planning Commission expressed concerns with the county portion of the development and did not want to take any action until the county granted or denied a rezoning petition. The applicant requested and received a referral by the Planning Commission until the county portion of the development status was resolved. The Planning Commission also requested Albemarle County be aware of the city's concerns with the project. On April 18th, 2018, the Planning Commission sent a letter to their counterparts with the county Planning Commission. The following are points the city Planning Commission conveyed to the county. Point one, both the city and county portion of the development will only be accessible by the way of city streets. Increased traffic and an increase of large vehicles, large trucks and equipment for farming and tree transplanting are a concern. Point two, the city would like to see this area, would like to see access for all residents to Morris Creek and Rebus Park. The opportunity for public access easements and new trails need to be considered with this application. The bicycle and pedestrian plan calls for a shared use path along Morris Creek in this location. Point three, the housing component of the development is very important to the city. Unattended consequences of zoning, unattended consequences of zoning the city portion of the development could lead to the loss of future housing stock that current R2 zone allows. A rezoning on the city side to highway corridor currently requires a special use permit for any density. Of concern is any future development that utilizes by right commercial or retail uses without incorporating a housing component. On September 12th, 2018, Albemarle Board of Supervisors approved an ordinance to rezone 7.52 acres from light industrial to rural areas. The following are key positions of the ordinance that was approved. One, the property will be developed in general accord with the conceptual plan titled TMP Hogwaller Farm dated January 16th, 2018 and last revised 6/27/18. Two, a 100-foot riparian buffer will be preserved from the top of Morris Creek's bank and signed. Uses on the site are restricted to the uses presented in Section 10.2, 3, 6, 7, 9, 21, and 27. And finally, any structures within the flood hazard overlay district shall not exceed 600 square feet of aggregate improved space. I'm going to skip the next part because the chair went over that, which is mainly the advertisement. I will read this. That portion was just listing the uses in the proffered language. In addition to the rezoning, the S U P for the stated parcel with the addition of Tax MAP 61, Parcel 7916, which is already zoned highway corridor, is also being considered. The S U P application is being requested to accommodate density for 18 one-bedroom and 12 two-bedroom units, which would be in two apartment buildings for a total of 30 dwelling units. In addition to the staff report and comments you will hear tonight during the public hearing, the commission may wish to keep the following residential density in mind during the discussion. Under current R2 zoning, the subject properties could accommodate approximately four to five detached single-family homes. Each could have up to four unrelated. Or three to four attached single-family homes, things like a duplex. And each unit within the attached single-family could have up to four unrelated. If the zoning is changed to highway corridor, no single-family detached or attached homes would be permitted. That use is not allowed in the highway corridor. The by right density in the highway corridor is zero. If the subject properties are rezoned and S U P is approved, the density would be 32 dwelling units per acre, giving you 30 units. So, current zoning, you're looking at four to eight units. Highway corridor, you'd look at zero units. Or highway corridor with S U P, you look at roughly 30 units. In addition to the comments presented in the staff report, additional comments from the public were received by staff after the report was finished and posted. Any email staff received was forwarded to Planning Commission and City Council. These comments raised concerns with development in the floodplain. The plan as presented would not be realistic as it relates to urban farming and producing food. The development would be out of character with the neighborhood. It does not match the existing comp plan. The zoning in this area should not change until Belmont goes through a small area plan process. The affordable units being proposed are not significant. And concerns about wetlands and traffic were also raised in these most recent emails. For convenience, on page 15 of the rezoning staff report, you'll find a summary of the standard of review for the project and the rezoning. And before I conclude, I do want to hand out two things. One, the motions have been changed. The attorney's office has reviewed the motions, and these are the motions y'all will need to use during that. And then during the pre-meeting, and the applicant during his presentation and during all questions can address this too, but the question about critical slopes came up. And after the pre-meeting while you're on here, I just wanted to verify and I wanted to clarify this. There are no critical slopes as defined in the zoning ordinance on this site. There are slopes over 25%, but those are related to subdivision. If you had slopes over 25% that you wanted to build public infrastructure, public streets, that's where the Planning Commission would have the authority to review it. Under the subdivision definition of critical slopes, that's where they, an applicant would need a waiver if they wanted to build in those slopes from City Council. So, the slopes that are there are not part of infrastructure. They are slopes over 25%, but because they're not for a road or anything, you can disturb those 25% slopes. And I have some of that. Give y'all. And with that, I will have you to answer questions or clarifying comments.
So, this time, we're just going to ask questions. We're not into discussion or opinion yet, but do you have any more questions for staff before we bring up the applicant for their presentation? And then we'll have time for the applicant, questions of the applicant at that time.
You recommended, on page 13 and 14, you listed a number of recommendations. But I think the only recommendation that you listed that was proffered is the fact that they will not exceed 35 feet. The other recommendations were not proffered. Is that right?
Are we talking the rezoning report or the staff?
We're talking the special use permit report, I believe. You talked about set packs and a number of recommendations.
If you're referring to the, I mean, those are condition staff. If the S U P was granted, these are some condition staff who recommend.
The 35 feet you mentioned, but that was proffered. The height of the greenhouse and how this high of the store, those were proffered, right?
The height of the building is proffered, not the.
The height of the building, yeah. So, that was proffered or was not?
The height of the apartment building is proffered.
But the height of the greenhouse and the height of the.
Farm store were not proffered. Those were S U P conditions for consideration.
Any other questions? We can always ask him to come back up after the applicant, if you'd like, before we go into public comment, but are there any other questions? Thank you, Mr. App. You're going to stick around?
Yeah, I'll be here only.
Okay. No, no, you won't. Or you'll be alone. Would the applicant like to make a presentation? So, we can go down to the. We can go down there and look at it if you guys can.
I'll give them a minute. Visuals help in this case, so get those up on the screen for us.
Say again.
I think the visuals help a lot, so get them up on the screen before I get started too much. I'll introduce myself, just so we can get rolling. She's.
Okay. Go ahead and get that started.
So, I'm Justin Schimpf. I am the engineer and the developer of this particular project. I have with me Kelsey and Kathleen to my office, and then Hannah Patrick, who is going to work on this nonprofit part that'll operate the farm component of this. So, she'll speak briefly about sort of the vision for that. So, I was here, of course, and this is about three new faces, I think, here since the last time we presented, so I'll go through this whole thing again. There's been some minor changes, but for the sake of everyone, the plan, this is a concept you've seen. I'm going to talk about a couple of things. First of all, it's sort of the ideal, I think, the best spot in the city for this concept of the urban farm integrating housing and agriculture. It's a good opportunity to diversify the housing stock. We have onsite affordable housing provisions and I believe is in fact consistent with comprehensive plan. A little more site context for you. So, blue, top left is our project. See, the Linden Lofts are a three-story, I think a townhome condo-type project adjacent. And then the other end of Nassau is the Carlton View Apartments, some of which are up and I think some more are following. So, that's some examples of multifamily in the area. Those are both larger in, you know, scale, number of units than we are, but there are some up and down Nassau. Perspective view of this. So, we have seven and a half acres in the county to use for the farming operation. Now, we've proffered out maybe three acres or so of that in buffers, so undisturbed area. So, in the county's review, we were promised to put up signs, hopefully keep out of certain areas. We'll be disturbing it, but not in the scale we originally proposing. So, tree farming component is somewhat gone away. It'll mostly be more of the community farming, the nonprofit type use for the Albemarle County land, and the housing will be on the city side. Also has some opportunities for trail connections. That was one of the things that came up in the letter. I've actually talked with Chris Jimson, I believe is his name, the parks folks, and we are, we have worked with him on getting a trail. His connection he wants to make is actually adjacent to this, and he went to that property owner, they didn't want to deal with him, so we actually went to that property owner and have a contract to purchase that and work so we can get the trail from the end of Linden down to the county property and across the sewer easement that's in the county property and on down. So, we think we'll be able to make that connection. We had to acquire one more property. It's not part of this action tonight. We had to acquire one more property to make that work. This is a summary we've already talked about, but it is important to note that's the bedroom count here is something to think about. It's 30 apartments, one and two-bedroom, 18 one-bedroom, 12 two-bedroom. So, in terms of the density discussion, you know, if you were to look at 15 units an acre times four bedrooms, for example, that's actually more people, more bedrooms than 30 dwelling units an acre times 1.5 average, right? So, you've got to think about that a little bit and scale these things. Our buildings are, you can see that these buildings on the left side of this are the proposed units. The country store there is the farm market where people with the nonprofit and just some that working on the farm can try to sell their goods. And the greenhouse is tucked in on the city portion as well in a little L shape there. The other properties are R2. They're part of this overall development, they're not part of the rezoning. We've been developing those. Some Affordable Housing Partners Habitat and the Land Trust are developing or building some of those units. We create a broader availability of housing in this area. It's a lot of single-family. There are some apartments and things already. There we have the duplexes, both that will be owner occupied and rentals on the same side of Nassau. So, we have, this gives us a, sort of completes that. The duplexes that are for rent would be three or four bedrooms, so we'll have eight of those and we'll have these one and two-bedroom apartments. Affordable units, that proffer is a word that is a little tricky to understand, but we'll clarify that. We've copied that idea from the concept of how the city does their affordable housing proffer already or special use conditions. And so, what it is, is that's in italics up there. Once you go over 1.0 FAR, you've got to have 5% of your building. So, over 1.0 FAR, 5%. We're under 1.0 FAR, floor air ratio, so ratio of square footage to site. So, we says, well, let's use a similar concept, but let's bump the number up a bit. So, we say instead of 5%, 15%. And so, depending on how the numbers work out, right now, we're about a half FAR. So, times 15% is 7.5%. And that's the quantity of units that will be afforded, so it's a two. The building that's a little larger, we could creep into three affordable units, but that would be sort of to be worked out with the architecture. So, we'll clarify that language in the proffer as it goes forwards. The other thing I want to point out is that, and we've heard discussion about this 80% AMI proffer, and does that help people that are at 30% AMI? It very much can. The way it helps people that are at that is that if you have a unit that's at 80% AMI, it falls into what the CHRA will count as an allowable unit for voucher. So, if my rent is above that level, then someone with vouchers, as I understand it, can't use that, can't occupy dwelling. But if I'm at the 80%, then if you make 30 or 40% AMI and you have the voucher, you can then go to this development and say, hey, I can live here and we would welcome them in. So, that's the benefit that even though it may be just stated affordable 80% AMI, the voucher program brings that down to really anybody in the city. There are a number of things about this that are, I think the comprehensive plan points to strongly. Certainly, the housing, the land use, I think there's a real value in taking what was historically agricultural area and putting something there that remembers it. You know, eventually that livestock market will be gone, and this will live on as sort of a, hey, there was a history of some agriculture here, and it's something that people are continuing, a new generation are continuing through the, you know, the organic farming, through the education about food that will continue on. We are also convenient to the park, Reeves Parks across the way. When we have the trail connection, you'll be able to go either, you know, through the park from this development or to the trail and around the Greenway Trail over to Willow Mills. So, there's some opportunities for connection there that, you know, nonvehicular, I think, are real positives. There's also really the traffic. I want to make sure everyone understands that, you know, the farming operation here is not a commercial sort of farm. It's more of an educational kind of farm. There's no big delivery trucks coming in, logging trucks rolling in and out. It's three acres and change, so you can do a lot with it, but it's not industrial, commercial scale type of activity whatsoever. When you think about the comprehensive plan, I think about, you know, not just the map, which does have, this is yellow, is the current map. I think the proposed map has it higher, but that's a little bit of a change, I realize. But the, you know, if you look at this whole thing, we have about three acres that we've developed. And with, and there's, at the far end, you've got Habitat for Humanity and the Thomas Jefferson Land Trust, they're going to build owner occupied units, I think, at various price points. In the middle, we have the three-bedroom rental units. They'll be the duplexes. They're also part of our development, not part of the zoning, and then our 30 additional units. So, as a whole, we're at 46 units over three acres, right at 15 units an acre on our side of the street. So, we still fall within that yellow category. We just, you look at the whole picture and get that map. So, in one corner, are we a little above? Yes, but really in scale of structures, it's not different. I mean, we could put four 3,000 square foot single-family house in these lots, and it wouldn't be entirely different in form than our buildings, it's a lot fewer people live in them. It's really what it is. I'll let Hannah chat for a minute about the farm. She's been working with me on how we develop this as a, you know, something for the community, and I'll let her pick that up.
So, I'd like to talk about the vision of the nonprofit aspect and hopefully switch some of the questions people have, feasibility of this as an urban farm, and clear up that the vision of this is really as an urban farm space, a demonstration space for a multiplicity of farming methods and farm products that can be easily replicated by backyard gardeners in the city and then taken home. It is not a large production farm whose number one priority is producing massive amounts of food. It's much more of an educational space. The mission would be to provide access to residents of the community who may not have large plots of home and the surrounding areas in the county to access this educational and experimental farming space. Experimental, really focusing on organics, on not having a tractor, but wanting to be able to grow massive amounts of food. So, it would be actually very gentle on the land as the way that we envision it right now. So, this farming space can accommodate different age groups, which is a need that I feel could be better met in the city at the moment with particularly farm nonprofits, welcoming different income levels, experience levels, and schedule availability. Okay, great. So, yeah, the need for information on the small organic methods is being lost, and I do believe that production farms are not really able to provide these services because they.
Can you give us another one minute to finish up?
Go ahead and finish.
Yeah, just the burden of time and money spent on educating community members isn't viable for large production farms, so I feel that this nonprofit could meet that need in the community.
Okay. Thank you. Get to me a second to come back. So, we'll open up questions for the applicant at this time, and those could be based off of the rezoning or the special use permit.
So, could you talk a little bit more about the greenhouse and what's going to be happening in the greenhouse?
Right, so, important, one of the complexities of this is that, and who knows, you know, looking back, it would've been easier to do one thing or the other, but you don't have like a residential zone where I can put a greenhouse in, right? But the greenhouse is fundamental to the farming operation, as is some kind of way a retail place where people can actually, you know, try to raise some money for this operation out of. And so, that's why I have to zone it, the highways. The greenhouse is really to, you know, it's so you can start your, you know, your crops, so you can educate people in that process, basically. Out near where I live is a wonderful place called Edible Landscaping that's a, you know, organic, grow everything under the sun. It's a neat place to go, take your kids, and they, you can buy kiwis there, plums, figs, you name it. And so, the idea is to have that sort of ability here. We just need to have a greenhouse. County ordinance is written, I can't put a greenhouse in the county property, and oddly enough, but we can have it on the highway zone property. So, since one of the parcels is already zoned highway, we said, well, we'll just zone the rest highway, allow a greenhouse to accommodate the needs of the farm, and then we'll proffer out basically everything else that's not appropriate there and then ask the residential. So, I realize that makes for a complicated zoning, but that's maybe the result of a complicated ordinance.
I've got a question about the farm. Did you say it would be run by a nonprofit or you'll be working with nonprofits?
Well, I would say both, depends on the scale. We're going to have a nonprofit that will run the educational part. I'm not sure exactly how much land they're going to need. So, alternatively, we would have ideally spots for people. Let's say you work the nonprofit, you become interested in this, right? And you want to lease 100 by 100 square area and have your own gardening operation. You could do that sort of as an entrepreneur and take your wares over to the farmer's market, for example. So, it'll kind of depend the balance, and it may end up being, you know, more on the educational side and, you know, programs and things and grants will help fund, or it may be that we spawn a bunch of, you know, farming entrepreneurs who are out there, you know, working hard. When you go to restaurants in Belmont, you can have, you know, hogwaller mushrooms with your risotto, or, you know, that's kind of the vision of it. But we'll have to see how it develops. That'll depend a little bit on, you know, how things play out. I don't know exactly.
And we've heard a number of concerns from local gardeners, including some that are involved in the gardens that were established in 2015 in the park across the street. Their concerns are that the floodplain isn't going to be particularly fertile or good to grow on. And I guess my question is more, have you spoken to those folks who work with those plots over there? Are you going to cooperate with them, or do you see yourself as competition?
Well, I don't think, no, it's no competition. I think we're all in the same sort of boat together, the same vision, I think. So, I mean, I talked to the folks who run the Casa Alma Place, oh, it must've been six months ago, but I haven't had any, they may or may not have commented, I don't know, but they were aware of what I was up to. You know, as far as the floodplain, floodplains are great places to farm, there's lots of fertile soil there. There are things, there are a lot of water in there, basically, all the urban runoff from 75 acres of city drains down into this property. We're going to mitigate that, and the idea is we can even use that, not necessarily for irrigation for vegetables, but if we can store water and use it for, you're getting trees or the landscaping, and we can kind of captivate what is a problem and make it a benefit. So, I'm not at all concerned about the suitability as far as growing things.
And do you anticipate that that farm store is going to be open year-round or just in certain times when the crops are in?
Hard to say about that, but I think, I think in part of the long-range vision, sort of making these things sustainable, we want to have a business plan that just doesn't say, oh, we're going to, you know, rely on grants. We want to be able to, like, create a educational and sort of a brand and say, hey, here's what we bring to neighborhood. And I think that some limited amount of commercial is a nice, a nice thing for small business for community use. And maybe, you know, at first, if it's not the farm stand, we've allowed things like the artist studio might be a nice use there. So, very low, small-scale commercial. It's very difficult for little, you know, small business, if you don't have a lot of money behind you and you're getting pushed out of like, you know, the Preston Avenue neighborhood where you're basically getting pushed out of that, you can't afford that rent anymore. You need a place to go to operate, and I think this could be that kind of spot where, you know, it's not on the main corridor, but as the activity grows along there, it could be a spot where some small businesses could occupy that space as well.
The affordable house proffer, it is, reads not more than 15 years.
Oh, yeah, that's wrong. 15 years is there.
You're going to make that 15.
We're going to make it 15 years, yes.
My turn. This nonprofit you speak about is, that's running this farm operation, has it been established?
We're just establishing it now. Wait, my attorney has to finish the paperwork for it.
What if it doesn't get established, then who's going to do it?
Well, I'm going to run it.
As for profit?
Well, I don't imagine this as being a profitable, necessarily enterprise, but I think it's one that has a good place in the community. So, if we can run it, then, and it's not, I have my engineering business, that's what I'm going to be doing, but I think there are a lot of people who'd be interested in a venture like this and have a go at it of being, you know, working with food, working with the local community in trying to make a business out of it.
I'm just trying to figure out, because right now, the organizational structure of this is through a nonprofit, so if the nonprofit's not there, how would you organize the structure of this business?
Well, yeah. So, I'm going to own the property, and then we'll lease it out for nothing, basically.
Can you go back to that plan showing that? So, you've got two garden areas and agricultural one and two. In the nonprofit structure, would people be able to maybe across the street or in the neighborhood run out garden space if they don't have it? Or people in these units, would they be able to use that as their own personal garden space?
Yes, certainly so.
Okay. Conditioning of the trail, I think it's a great idea, and I know it is definitely part of, part of our comprehensive plan now to continue that, but I don't see anything in the special use permit, and I'm not suggesting it proffer, but I don't see any guarantee that that trail is, that you're going to keep moving forward on whatever needs to be done to make those trail connections. Is that something we can put in the conditions of the S P?
In the S U P.
S U P, okay.
Even though, just to clarify, because I was concerned about that, it's actually not on the city property. The trail, the trail in question would go, so if you look at this map, see where the corner of Linden and Nassau is there?
Up here.
Yes. So, that's the piece that the parks folks wanted to go through, the owner didn't want to deal with them, and so we're buying the property and we're going to grant the easement through there and then turn and go down through the forest, basically, outside the agriculture area.
Right here.
Yep.
In the county.
With the trail. I don't have a problem with that condition. I don't know if it's enforceable because it's not in the same jurisdiction.
Right.
But if you approve this, you know, rezoning of this housing, I'm happy to stand here and say, I'll grant that easement to the city.
And you have some conditions in the site, in the special use permit application that you can wordsmith when you get there?
Like 32 of them.
Yeah, if it's approved, there's one specific condition that requires. Yeah, if it's, if it's approved, there's, there's one specific condition that requires the applicant to work with staff.
Okay.
On implementing the, the trail.
Okay, okay. And I understand all that you're talking about with the density and housing, I guess, and I appreciate you coming, bringing forth this matrix, there are some questions I have on the matrix, how this relates to urban farming and the things that you're telling us here. I'm not sure how bowling alleys fit into that.
Should've been taken out.
Or car washes, because that, to me, is right in the stream.
I think a proffer takes all those things out, doesn't it?
I thought it does, it was supposed to be crossed out.
It doesn't, actually. I highlighted the ones that are not taken out, so I was...
Oh, in the matrix, okay.
Yeah, in the matrix, it was applied, supplied. So I'm not sure how those two fit in.
Well, with the extent we can, you know, modify that in the hearing here, you consider those scratched out.
Or an electronic gaming cafe, I don't know how that relates to urban farming, but other than that, yeah.
Well, yeah, that we can scratch down, too. We did leave, as a quick background on that, we'll be, the last meeting, that was come up, that brought up, and I said, okay, and, and what happened was, one of my staff members went through the list, and my direction to her was, the only thing that's not like related to the small business and the farming of this is take out. And there was some, you know, difference of opinion about what those things are. Then, and I was going to strip them all for nothing, and then I was listening to one of the council meetings, and I think it was for Dairy Central, and a young woman got to speak about, not that project, but just the idea that, like, the, the city had just given seventy-five thousand dollars to the downtown business association, but then displaced two minority businesses. And it just kind of hit me, you know, maybe providing some business opportunity that is more, you know, reachable for people is a good idea. And that's, so I left more things in there than I might have otherwise, because I imagined, like, what if I, what if ten years from now, housing is not a precarious state, and we want to convert a couple units in the first floor to, you know, a studio of some kind, or, you know.
Well, and I see that art studio and art workshop, and that makes total sense.
I just imagine those in the future being a good, not today, I think we need to get housing, but in the future, maybe that's a smart move.
Car washes very much concern me in this area.
Instead of struckin'.
Just because of the nature of the chemicals or whatever in that, so.
I think something worth noting is, I think you guys only crossed out things that were by right, were bowling alleys and car washes, both require a special use permit, and you didn't cross any of those.
Yes, that would be why, then, yes, okay. Yeah, if it was special use permits, we just said, well, you know, I don't think the city would ever grant a special use permit for car wash there, so we didn't feel the need to strike it out. So, so that, that's the confusion, I, I thought we had gotten all those, but...
Nothing surprises me in this city, so.
Additionally, we couldn't proffer out any uses that weren't allowed with the zoning, so that's why, yeah, special use permit was an additional step, as we were saying.
I have a question about the potential of the overwhelming success of the urban farming program. If that occurs in ten years and this becomes bigger than you anticipated, does the highway corridor, this might be a staff question, does the highway corridor provide for street parking if you see people showing up like they do for the downtown farmer's market?
Well, Nassau Street does have street parking, you know, on-street parking available. You know, we would have some, this parking available for the agricultural operations in the county piece. So we are permitted to have parking in that piece, we can't have like parking for the residential, we can have parking associated with the agricultural, so if, yeah, I mean, that would be great, if we have a hundred people a day coming, that would be wonderful, but if they do, we can park them in the county.
So if that happened, if that happened, you could park them in the county for a short term, or?
That's right, you can pick up your produce and go on your way.
There's a bus two blocks away.
Hang on one second. The other question I had is the affordable units, is it correct? The staff report is correct, so we're talking two affordable units?
Yes.
Is that one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and what are you anticipating?
I guess we have, you know, we hadn't specified that, in the, in the special, in the conditions, if you want to say one of each, or I'm open to that either way. We'll have two units, and if the buildings grow, we might trip three, the way our math is, but again, let's, let's say two is the baseline, we're for sure have two, and, either way, maybe one of each is appropriate, is a need for all types.
I just want to mention, in relation to what we were talking about before, the by-right uses that were not struck, that we've heard concerns about from the community?
We're in questions, we can have that conversation?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah, okay. Let's just do, let's have conversation after we hear from the public, though, is that okay?
Sounds good.
All right, keep us on track. Any more questions for staff, I mean, for staff or the applicant? Questions from council?
Yes, I have a couple. I'm just a little curious, not too long ago, I did speak with a member of the public that told me, and she had a community garden plot, and I think it was in Azalea Park, and when we had the recent flooding, the water levels rose, and they were advised not to eat the produce because of the, of the bacteria counts in the river. Have you been testing the river to under, to make sure that that is actually a viable kind of floodplain for growing?
Right, well, we, we know the floodplain, first, this is, this is a different floodplain between there and Azalea Park, because Azalea Park got knocked out, I think, three times in the last six months, and so this particular area of the floodplain is actually backfed from the Rivanna, so we haven't had a flood that flooded this particular ground that I'm aware of since nineteen seventy-two. We've done a bunch of research on that, and so, I mean, there is a, a scenario where the garden floods, and, you know, it takes a year to, to cycle through, I think that is a risk, but I mean, it's one that has a much lower probability of occurrence than at Azalea. That's, that's the IRC, is that, who has the, yeah, they actually asked me about helping them rebuild some of that, and I need to get back to them, but yes, the, I'm aware of that, I think it's a little different floodplain. There's a risk, but much less of that here.
So my second question's relating to the composition of the unit counts in your duplexes. You said one side of the duplex is three and four-bedroom, and the other side was one and two-bedroom?
Oh, no, sorry, that's, so we have the, in the, in the middle of these blocks, right, there's the, there's some back-to-back duplexes, those are posed as three or maybe four bedrooms. So those will be rentals as well that we're going to develop, and so my point was that in the sort of overall development scheme, we have the sort of owner-occupied attached units, that are Habitat and Land Trust, we have some three and four-bedroom rentals, you know, for larger families, and then the proposal in front of you is just one and two bedrooms only, so, I mean, small units, small footprint, trying to kind of minimize traffic and just create more housing units on a smaller footprint base of building.
Yeah, because I was getting confused that it was almost like a student suite of unrelated people.
Right, no, no, not, in the rezoning, you know, one, eighteen one-bedrooms with their own, you know, bathroom, their own private unit.
Thank you.
I have a question regarding the greating of the site, and the render, it looks flat, but currently, there's kind of a steep downslope from the street, except for the mound where the house is. What's the plan to regrade that? Is it going to be all at street level?
More or less, yeah, about, it will be street level or a little below in that area, and so the front, the front yard is already there, and then we'll have to fill some in the back to bring that up to the level. Everything will slope down away from the road, but not as drastic as it does today.
So, real quickly, we had a flood on May twenty-ninth or thirtieth, it did flood.
Down here?
Yeah.
Even down there, did not see any, any flooding in the, the garden area, farm area.
Not in, not in, not in this particular area?
Not in that area, oh, it did flood, down, further down.
This way?
Yes. Yeah, and so again, it's, it happens is the Rivanna creates the flood, and we looked at that, it's the floodplain, the flood that happened in May, we're geeks, right, it's the kind of thing we do, was ten, roughly ten feet below the hundred-year floodplain elevation. I know that because I know the hundred-year floodplain elevation from surveys I did.
Here.
And on the Rivanna corridor, I'd say between East High Street, Willa Mills, we had other locations there, we could see the elevation, and we knew that it was about ten feet below what the hundred-year floodplain actually is. So a hundred-year flood does get in this property by two or three feet, so we were probably four or five feet from being flooded. So, yeah, it, it is, it is a possibility, but I think one that, if it happens once every twenty or thirty years, we can live with.
Any other questions until we can open public comment?
Sorry, did you say earlier there was three and a half acres for the riparian buffer, so it's going to be three-point-nine as the farmland?
Roughly so, the riparian buffer is defined by the limit of the floodway or the hundred foot, whichever is greater, I, I haven't plotted that out to the nearest, you know, tenth of an acre, but it's three and a half acres and thereabouts, that the, the county said, don't disturb.
You definitely don't want zoning out there for that, do you?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Any more?
And will the trail run along the creek once it goes down from the plot to the south?
Um, that's kind of the, I guess, the city's call on that, I'm happy with that, there's actually a very, along the edge of the stream bank, it's relatively thin, it's not like an overgrown, back in the middle, it's kudzu-infested, it's terrible, but in the edge, it's actually quite nice, and so I'm, the city talked initially about following the sewer easement back there, it's already clear, and it's a straight shot, so that's, like, you know, if you want to pave path to get in your bicycle and go fast on, that's better, but if you want to go along the creek, I'm kind of, it's the city's call on that.
The county has a person like Chris, and they work together when it crosses county-city boundary lines to connect all of these trails, so. Thank you.
Fine, thank you.
At this time, I would open the public hearing, and this is your time to speak on either the special use permit or the rezoning. So, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Is it still possible to sign up?
Yes, ma'am, I'll call that in a minute, thank you. So, Steve Brown.
My name is Steve Brown, and I live at nine-eleven Nassau Street. My wife and I are not in favor of the proposed rezoning for Hogwaller Farms. One, Nassau Street is residential in character, and we want to preserve that, the city's comprehensive plan calls for residential zoning on Nassau Street. Highway corridor zoning, however, is designed to facilitate commercial uses that are not consistent with the existing patterns of use on Nassau Street. Two, we're concerned about the unintended consequences of the zoning change and how it would affect the neighborhood in the future, in terms of by-right uses that you all have already started asking questions about. Again, we're interested in preserving that future residential character of Nassau Street. Another point is that Hogwaller Farms' proposal to have two units at the eighty percent AMI to us doesn't seem like the right mix of new housing that our city needs, as evidenced by the Housing Needs Assessment, affordable housing for residents at twenty to sixty percent AMI is extremely scarce, and we would very much like to see development on Nassau Street prioritize affordability for those low and very low-income individuals and families. The fourth point I'd like to make is just that our nearly ten years of experience developing an urban homestead across the street leads us to conclude that the, the vision for Hogwaller Farms is not particularly realistic, everything we've heard doesn't seem like it warrants a commercial farm stand, or that the small-scale farming on wetlands would result in neighbors having access to local produce. In conclusion, we ask the planning commission and city council to deny the request for rezoning, and we hope that the residential nature of Nassau Street would be maintained consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. Thank you.
If there's anyone else that would like to speak to either of these, please come up and state your name, and then you'll have three minutes, and the timer will go off, but if you'll just state your name.
Okay, my name is Virginia Grace Abraham, and I lease at Linden in the, not on the loft, but the next building, and I'm all in favor of this. I moved here from Loudoun County, and I watched rampant development run over the farms. I am a horticulturist, I like to grow food, and I feel that the farm nature and the farm stand can not only help a small grower, but the neighborhood. I am very familiar with seventh-generation farmers in Loudoun County and the fight they've had with the county where roads went right through their farm. Farm stands can be used for dried produce on the off-seasons, we can create wreaths and things like that to sell. My landlord is wide aware of the need for affordable housing and has spoken to me about it, and I feel like if we are going to nitpick about the Dillon Rule, I know land use planning is the most complicated thing on earth to study and practice, but I feel that there are merits that may not be elucidated point by point here that we have yet to flush out, and I would ask that you give them an opportunity, I'm really excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else here like to speak, please come on up?
I would be interested to know what type of trees are being planted, be planted there, and, Ms. Green, you mentioned about the time in May, I went by that property, which I used to do quite a bit, and I did see standing water on the property, so it was flooded on, in, in a May. There's also standing water there more than six months of the year, and I think the land also qualifies for, certain sections of it qualify for wetland protection, which doesn't allow development to be taking place. There's also a city drain line that comes down, serving the water, runoff water for the city streets, that dumps right over there, kind of like the empty space between the two buildings, two big buildings, and there's always water standing, standing there four months of the year, basically, and so that would have to be moved, or something be done with that in order to accommodate that water, and I also wondered what, what, that water is put into that land that may affect agricultural use. I also have a concern about an article that appeared in the Daily Progress, I believe it was earlier this year or maybe last year, in which it may have been a misspoken word by the applicant, where he kind of used a slang word for marijuana, and I kind of wonder what may be the future of this property long-term. Passing around that newspaper, because that was an article that appeared in the New York Times yesterday, there was also another one that the Daily Progress had, and I hope that you all saw the article in, that was done by Sixty Minutes, a segment that they did about three weeks ago about building floodplains and the harm that it's doing to this country, that we continue to build on floodplains, insurance repairs for the damages that take place, and we rebuild, and then another flood comes by at a later date and causes damage. This property I've been watching for years, because it did come up quite a few years ago for development, and I have seen time after time where there is, at times where there is some flooding and standing water on this property. I'm going to go ahead and read a letter that I wrote for another purpose, and hopefully I'll have enough time to read it. Locally, I oppose development in Hogwaller, it is a flood zone that would be possibly qualified for protection under the wetland rule. Virginia has a law that protects from development land that qualifies as wetland, unless the definition of wetland has changed, the rule was that the land was, has standing water on it for more than six months, it qualifies for wetland, wetland protection from development. You don't need to be near coastal area to qualify, I know an area in Wintergreen on the mountain has been designated as wetland. Building flood zones not only puts at-risk buildings and people in the immediate area, but increases flooding further downstream. I hope everyone will read the two articles and watch the Sixty Minutes segment, maybe you won't be able to know it, maybe you've seen it already, but at some point, as being on this board, I hope you all will take the time and read these articles and watch the Sixty Sec, Sixty, Sixty Minutes segment that they did. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that'd like to speak?
Good evening, I'm Travis Pietala from the Southern Environmental Law Center, thank you for the chance to comment here tonight. Since a couple of you are new members, I want to start by briefly explaining our interest in this issue. As part of SCLC Charlottesville Outmower Project, we work to promote sustainable land use patterns and transportation options in the city and county. The applicant's concept of an urban farm residential development straddling the city and county boundary is an interesting one, and we appreciate the proposal to include affordable units on-site. However, we do have some concerns with the location of this proposal, as well as the potential uses that could occur. as well as the potential uses that could occur here under the applicant's current proposal. This site is located almost entirely within the floodplain and very close to a stretch of Morris Creek that is one of the most severely impaired stream segments in our region. Along these lines, staff has recognized that this development may not comply with the goals of the city's comprehensive plan related to ensuring that new development respects sensitive environmental resources and adequately protects water quality. To the extent the city is willing to consider development here that's more intensive than what the comp plan calls for, it's imperative that great care is taken and minimize its effects on Morris Creek and the floodplain. Unfortunately, we don't see that being well reflected in the current proposal. For example, the staff report notes that innovative design techniques will be needed for this project to meet the city's stormwater requirements. Yet the application materials show that the applicant has not proposed to incorporate any low-impact design techniques, or LIDs, into the project. And staff has indicated that stormwater compliance will be hashed out later in the review of the final site plan. Given the sensitivity of this site, we're concerned that the important approvals being requested today may be granted with so little information about this crucial aspect of the project. Other recent approvals in the city have included specific conditions or proffers for using LID techniques that retain and absorb stormwater on site. And this area at least warrants that additional level of protection. Also, we share the commissioner's concerns raised earlier with some of the land uses this rezoning would allow. The applicant is proposing a change from low-density residential zoning to the highway mixed-use district, one of the most intensive and auto-oriented districts in the city. And while the applicant is proposing to proffer out some of the overly intensive uses that are generally allowed in this district, we think it's equally important to highlight some of the uses that would not be proffered out, meaning they could still occur on this site. They include convenient stores and large groceries by right and car washes and shopping malls by special use permit. We can't see these uses being suitable for this location and they are far afield from the urban farm residential concept being proposed. So even if the commission determines that highway zoning may be workable here, we urge you at the very least to take a close look at the proffered use list. Engage the applicant's willingness to limit it further to those uses that make sense here and are protective of this site. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak regarding this application or these applications? If not, then I will close the public hearing and we can begin discussion. Now's your time.
I guess I'll start off by talking about the impact of density as compared to the 2013 comprehensive plan. Staff noted that 30 units per acre is above the max 15 in the low-density designation in the land use map from 2013. However, I note that staff told us to consider the entire development when considering the impacts on the neighborhood and residents. And it seems to me that when evaluating density on livability, we should take the entire site into account and include the acreage that will be vacant space with no residences, which works out to three and a half units per acre.
Is that allowable?
Sorry?
I say, is that allowable? Is that a question for the? I didn't think I followed it.
So I think we're not making any legal determinations based on that just considering how that affects, you know, the impact of this development. But curious if staff thinks that makes sense to think about that.
So let me make sure, maybe, so you're taking the square footage that's on the parcel that's in the county, adding it to the city and then noting, is that?
Yeah, the overall density of the site, of the project.
Well, I mean, I think that's a consideration. It's not necessarily what's before you all today, but, you know, you can look at the site and in the broader context.
What would you like to see there then, if you add the?
So I just wanted to note that though the city portion of it alone is above the recommended density in the 2013 land use map, that the overall site project is within, and actually well below, the density specified in the 2013 map.
So you're suggesting that if we view this in the totality, a rezoning isn't necessary?
No, it is still necessary because I guess legally speaking, it's only on the, you know, city portion. But just that in evaluating the impact on people and in particular, how it conforms to the comprehensive plan of 2013, that the development as a whole is rather low-density and in fact, only about a fifth of the threshold that crosses low-density.
It's a great idea except for the fact that you don't have any control over what happens in the county. So if they decide to go in and rezone and the only way to access that property is through the city. So I'm not sure that's good zoning practice to take a look at that as a, because you're not evaluating the impact on the city and the city streets there if you take it in that context. Right? Because we don't have any control over what they're going to, they, the county would do if they decided to rezone it and put, and the floodplain, I mean, you know, again, that thing surprises me anymore. A hundred dwelling units per acre. Their only access is through the city.
Yeah, I think that's a fair point.
So I have a question about the design techniques for the runoff and water quality issues for the creek nearby. By and large, I'm not opposed to rezoning for development and moving into the future, but I do think that the onus is on the developer to give more details about specific design techniques for water runoff and build, I don't know if we build that into a vote to approve the rezoning. But I would think that that's something that should be mandated before a rezoning is approved.
So I want, I do this a lot and since you guys are new, I'll do it again. A rezoning in a special use permit is not for the guy standing in front of us. He is our applicant. But we could sit in front, with him in front of us and then tomorrow it's sold to somebody else and there's no guarantees and there's no. So I just caution us on that. We're zoning the property. So if there are concerns, this is the time to hash those out and talk about those. And, you know, decide, we've got some motions and they're, like I said, we've got two. The motions that we were handed, the first one's for the rezoning application, the second one is for the special use permit. The, there are several conditions, I've got this as a large packet, on the special use permit conditions that aren't listed here. And so we'd have to go through those based off of the information that we have. Mr. Affley, do those still apply or did you just leave those off? Or are they not, are they not something that we would need anymore?
No, you still need to look at the conditions. The motion just changed. There was, the attorney's office wanted to make sure that there was the correct language in the motion. But if you, if you got to the special use, if you got through the rezoning and one, and went into the special use, you would need to go through the conditions to see which, if they're appropriate conditions. If there's other conditions you wanted to add or subtract.
In your special use permit packet, those conditions for the special use permit, which is the second one, is on page 15 and six, no, that's not true, 16 and 17. And then for, for the rezoning, it's on page 15. And it doesn't seem to have many, so.
Yeah, you can't, you can't condition the rezoning. Just as a reminder that, but you do have proffers that have been provided by the applicant. And on the special use end of things, there are potential for conditions. And that may be another place for consideration on the concerns that Mr. Heaton has outlined as well. However, you know, that's definitely something as you're looking at the standard of review for both the rezoning and the special use permit to take into account the concerns that you may have and how they may or may not fit within those criteria.
I'm wondering if we've got enough to make an intelligent vote on this. I think the point about the LIDs is a good one. I think the points about, I think there's value in us knowing a little bit more about the way they're going to structure the site plan to mitigate some of the floodplain issues and stormwater runoff would be of value. I, I think we need to know a little bit more about those, the site plan before we even move on a rezoning or an SUP vote.
So really quick, if we, so we should vote on the rezoning first? Does that mean the SUP would not pass or could you, could we approve one and not the other?
So you all, as you know, are simply making recommendations to city council. So you would decide whether or not you think, you decide whether or not to recommend the rezoning to city council? And then you move on to the proposed special use permit? And you should review that as if city council might approve the rezoning. You know, what conditions do you see as being necessary in order for the development to be appropriate at this site? But you, you can qualify your motion saying, "We haven't recommended that the rezoning be approved, but in the event city council should approve it, then these are the minimum conditions we think would be necessary."
The other thing, the standards of review for the rezoning are page 15. And there are four standards of review there. They're outlined nicely. Thank you, Mr. Affley. And then the standards of review for a special use permit are, oh, I forgot to bring those for you guys. It's on pages, yeah, it's a highlighted one.
It's the highlighted versions on page 15. But it is going to be outlined earlier in the report.
Right, right, right. That's what I was trying to.
On page five.
Lots of pages. Right. Standards of review on page five for the special use permit. That out, to me, is always helpful to have that in front of me. I think there are a lot of good things about this development, but I will just say I'll have a hard time voting for approval of either at this point based off of several concerns I have with the rezoning. The standards of review, in my opinion, are outlined right there. The first one says it does not comply with our comprehensive plan. We've talked about that. And then while it does further this, the second one, there's no justification in the third level of review for, for our standards of review. And then I have a lot of concerns. As we heard, this is one of our most dense, car-centric zoning districts that we have in the city. And it feels like we're trying to make something fit where, and it's too much for this area. Again, it's a gray concept. I understand the complicated of the zoning, but there are too many things left in that matrix even by special use permit. And I understand the reason for that. But if you leave it in there, it leaves that door open for things that you can't imagine. And so I think it needs to be more comprehensive, us taking a look at this to see if this is, if we're trying to get an urban farm out of a highway commercial corridor, the uses need to match that. And I'm not, I agree with the, I was, you know, concerned about the grocery store, obviously, the car wash and just others that were listed there. And I just think even if it's by special use provisional, if it doesn't, if it doesn't meet what we're trying to accomplish here, I'm not sure why it's in there provisional or special use permit. So I'll just throw that out there.
I would agree with your concerns, but I think if you deny it based on understanding of a highway corridor, then you need to say, "Well, if there is a way to do this, what is another way if not rezoning it to highway? Is there another path?" And I don't, that's the problem. You're going to catch 22 there.
Well, I would say that take a look and be more comprehensive. If you're going to do, if highway is the only way it goes, then you take a more comprehensive look at that, at that grid, matrix and you continue to take out the things that aren't compatible with this. And, and also.
You understand what I'm saying? What is the way forward? This isn't.
And also address any, there's several, well, we are in a floodplain. This is our water. This is water quality. That's a huge thing in our comprehensive plan. We have an entire environmental chapter. Urban farming, we haven't heard anything about all organic and no pesticides and no. So that is a concern. Again, the housing aspect seems like, you know, I can't say this is not a great place for that. And even higher density is something we talk about all the time in some of our, well, not yet for you two, but in our comprehensive plan discussions about higher, the higher density, having a park across the street, I mean, it does, it fits in. And, you know, higher density gets us more affordable units. I'm not sure about this notion of the 80% allowing the 30% AMI to use their vouchers. I don't know if that, is that true or not? But anyway, regardless of that, you know, this is the kind of area that we talk about. But it's kind of like, the rest of it, I have problems with.
So I definitely share your concerns about the highway zoning. I note that we received a public comment about 1006 Linden and the highway zoning that happened there a few years ago for the jaunt parking lot. And I was down there on Sunday and it really is a jarring juxtaposition between that parking lot filled with buses and, you know, the single house right next to it with the fence that's about half the height of the buses. But it seems to me that in this case, the highway rezoning is something of a means to an end where they don't really plan on making it auto-oriented. As staff notes, it's not technically compatible with the highway zoning ordinance as written, but it can serve our goals in the comprehensive plan of developing more housing. And I will say, one concern I have about this plan is that, and in particular, the first suggested condition we impose on it, the maximum 32 dwelling units per acre versus the maximum allowed by the zoning ordinance, 43. So the ordinance allows us to grant up to 10 more units here, which would even further serve our goals of housing. And again, these small, one and two-bedroom units are in line with what we've been told by the reports that we need. So I would be curious if the developer would be willing to modify the plan to squeeze in?
No, they, they requested the 32 DUA and so we can only go that or lower. So, yeah, that's a very good point, though.
But we can only work with what the request informed us.
Or lower.
There is a lot that I, that I do like about this. I, but again, the environment, the environmental factors are a worry. And I, again, I think we need to know more before we vote. And I think that, you know, a deferral until we can talk about the site plan, what the site plan looks like and how that site plan would mitigate some of the problems that were outlined, but it really would be of great value.
I guess for me, I'm speaking to the mic. I really do have heartburn with number one and three, the fact that it does not comply with the city's comprehensive plan. This is not the first project that has came before me where I have a real big issue where it goes against the comprehensive plan, especially because we're doing so much work now in working on the comprehensive plan. Also, for one of my other comments that I wanted to make is why I appreciate the affordable housing. I, one, would like to know, and we may have discussed this already. I, one, would like to know, and we may have discussed this already, what the units are going to be rented for. And two units are great, but that's not really moving the needle much on our needs for affordable housing. So, if the applicant gets a chance, I would definitely like to know the rent price points.
It was 1,200 in the staff report.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I missed that.
That's okay, but I don't know if that was for a one or a two bedroom. And that's, I guess, one bedroom.
Which is horrible. But the, well, I would still like, is anything included? I don't know if we can, if I can ask you that right now. Is that okay?
Yeah, okay.
The blessing of the speaking, I think. So, yeah, the numbers, I, Kelsey thought numbers were better, but it's like 1,179 for a two bedroom and 900 for one bedroom.
950.
950. And that has to include the utility allowance.
Yes.
Yeah, so that is including utilities in that. So, for example, if we rent somebody, we have to back out like a hun, what is the number, $125, and subtract it from their rent. They pay that, and then, and then they pay utilities separately. So, their total outlay has to be that number, the 1,179 or something like that for a two bedroom.
So, that's, and even though utilities aren't paid to you, but-
Right. I have to deduct the rent to accommodate their cost of utilities to Dominion, whoever.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so, yeah, it is, it's interesting challenge, right? Because we need a lot more affordable housing. Problem is that, even in this scenario with these extra units, the margins between that and like, single-family housing are such, it just, I can't give more. You know, I mean, I wish, now, I could. For example, like, I'd be amenable to going, you know, for the three bedrooms or even some of this, you know, go to the city's affordable housing fund, say, "Hey, if you guys can help me invest in this, a very minimal investment, I can make more affordable units." There's opportunities in something like that to do it, but it's hard, it's hard to, you know, if the market rent is just a crazy figure, right? It's like $1,500 a month for a two-bedroom, and you drop that down to 1,000. You know, you figure $500 a month difference times $6,000 a year times 15 years, you know, that's what, $90,000 per unit. It's effectively, developers said, "Hey, I'm, to the side, you know, that's, you can do what you can afford, but if I do too much of that, and I go to the bank, they say, 'Well, you're not going to have enough cash to build any of this.'" And then I can't, I build no units. So, it's a balance there of how you deal with that. I am all about working with, you know, any other groups in the community to try to figure out a way to do more. I just, without that sort of, you know, assurance of working with some other groups, I just can't really do more than that. But it is, but I think probably the, you know, the affordable units are meaningful, I think. It's, you know, two is better than none. You know, and that's kind of the alternatives here. I guess maybe up here, if I could talk about the idea of deferring and the other questions that, okay?
Sure.
So, I mean, we can do that. I will say that, you know, as far as stormwater stuff, we have between 100 and 175-foot buffer off Morse Creek, right? So, that's staying natural vegetated, everything from our site, drains through there, you know, through the county portion. The county could, in theory, remove that restriction from me one day. I think that's very unlikely. I don't ever plan to ask for it. So, we do have a buffer built in. It's not part of the city plan, but it is part of this project overall. Other times, you guys have put conditions as an LID checklist the city has, and they'll be, say, "Hey, you've got to meet 10 points in the LID checklist." If that's what you guys feel is appropriate, you could tack that as a special use permit, you know, a special use permit condition. That's okay by me. I think there's a catch to this, but just broader point. When we start adding more costs, it's kind of like what I said about the commercial stuff. It makes the housing more expensive, and it kind of knocks people out. Preservation of neighborhoods means more expensive for everybody else, and the preservation of, you know, your storm, and it's an important thing, it's a balance, you've got to have both. But you tack on an extra $200,000 to my site costs, and it's because of the stormwater, and it's something I have trouble building my market affordable units.
Okay.
So, I'm open to discussions about that, but I would just say there's, you know, trade-offs on both sides, and we'll have to move this, we'll have to stay in forward however it needs to happen.
Thank you.
I just want to make a comment, and where-
That's what this is, I'm going to have you sit back down.
Right.
Because I don't want us to go back into this, back and forth. We can have a work session on that, but we're, we're-
And so, my comment is this, is where I'm very, I'm very well aware of that the cost and that if you're not being profitable, there's no point in doing business. But at some point, developers are going to have to realize with the crisis that we have in this city, it cannot always be about profit. Somebody's going to have to build some character. And I'm not saying it's going to be you, but we're going to have to start somewhere. And I think if you're, if people are going to come to this body or city council and want special use permits, you need to come with more than two units. And I don't want to hear it's because you can't make money, because it's possible. You can make a little less money and then give the city a little bit more of what it needs to move this needle forward. And I'm not jumping specifically at you, but I'm saying in general, I think that's a fair charge to people who want to develop in this city. We have an issue. We can't solve it alone. We know it's a money issue, so somebody's going to have to feel it a little bit on both sides in order to get what we want.
So, back to the rezoning. Two motions. Is there any further discussion on the rezoning before we went to the-
Can I ask, does the LID checklist satisfy SELC's concerns?
I mean, if you'd like to see it fleshed out more, it's hard to say if just a particular point number is going to be that.
Here's what I'm going to suggest. I am more than willing, and we have people, applicants come all the time, if this wants to be a work session, if there wants to be a deferral, and we want to do a work session with the applicant on this. But right now, what we've got is we've advertised things to the public, and that's what we've got. And the proffers have been advertised, and I'm not sure, there's, I guess things can be added, but definitely things like density can increase, we can only decrease. So, I think we want, am I wrong in this, Ms. Robertson?
Can I ask what the process would be for retracting that proffer? Would they have to go through the whole application submission again? Or do they defer it next time?
It would.
So, why do you want to-
The density proffer? The max 32 units breaker?
I think that was their main application, not their- That's the SUP.
Yeah, that's the, and that would cause, so that would be a change to the SUP. It would kind of be like starting over. You, they would, because it's very substantially different, they would have to go back to the community, have a community engagement meeting, and do that process over. So, it wouldn't necessarily be like a new application, but it'd be starting the application over.
So, if this is not what we think we want here, and I guide you all in this direction because we're going to have a lot more of these conversations when it comes to the comprehensive plan as we guide this. If this is not meeting this criteria as to what is in the complaint already, then we need to take a look at it, and it's hard. Sitting up here and denying things is a hard job, but you've got to deny it or approve it and say, you know, it's kind of like your, the jaunt bus situation. I mean, things have impacts. It is why we're having such a hard time with our-
Let me ask a parliamentary question. If a motion is made to approve and the motion is denied, how is that different than a motion being made to deny? Does it do the same thing?
It's just different. No.
I didn't think so.
If you move to approve something and that motion doesn't pass, then that motion hasn't passed. You still need to affirmatively take action by majority vote.
We either approve, you make a motion, you'd keep making, you'd make a motion that would get approval, or you make a motion to deny and that get approved. Something has to be approved.
Right.
Does that make sense? The approval of the denial or the approval-
You have to provide a motion that would be a recommendation to council.
Right. And we all agree on.
Well, you don't have to agree, you have to have a majority.
Right, well, right.
That's my question, is what does that set into motion if an, if a motion is made to approve and the motion does not pass? Does that then say that the, is there a second motion to deny?
There could be been a motion to deny, and someone would have to second, and then that would have to be a majority to move that forward.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, if it is the, you know, there's a debate of whether they should move forward out more detail, I'm not opposed to deferring it and having another conversation if we could do a work session and talk about this issue. You know, I don't think the things that are being asked are fundamentally changed what I'm trying to accomplish. So, I'm open to that. If there's a, you know, willingness of everyone's part to say, "Let's sit down across, you know, a table and say, 'Here's the issues at hand, here's the list, here's the ones we're concerned about, we can scratch them out.'" We're willing to look at that.
Well, we do those occasionally at the end of meetings. Oh, God, it's too many papers. Am I right? What paper are you looking at? I'm looking for the agenda that is somewhere buried deep in this.
Tonight's report?
Right there.
Yeah. I mean, at the end of-
Not suggesting tonight, I'm just suggesting-
No, I'm not suggesting tonight either. But under commission action items, there are many times where we've had developers or come in and have a back and forth dialogue.
Typically, that's like a pre-application review-
Right.
Where someone brings in their idea and gathers feedback prior to bringing for the request, but it could be the opposite way.
So, are you asking for a deferral?
Yeah, I think that's in the best interest. I don't want this to move forward to cloud or one way or the other, right? I mean, I don't think you'll find that if you flush these issues, everybody can be satisfied, but it's going to be hard to, like, flush them all right here, right? People probably want to go home, they have children, things like that. I appreciate that, because I have some, too, I wouldn't mind seeing so. So, I'm, that's perfectly fine by me. We've come this far, I've been at it for a long time. I don't want to rush to the end here and not do it right.
So, we would need to make, are you, so the motion for, I mean, request for deferral on both applications?
Yes.
Okay. So, we would need a motion to-
And I move that we accept the applicant's request for deferral.
I'd like to second that.
On both motions.
On both applications. We have a second.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second for deferral on both applications. We'll take those one at a time.
Question. Yes. Can we add the work session to the deferral, or does that automatically come with it?
I think that the applicant is willing to do that based off of his deferral. I'm not sure, that's a parliament, should we, do we need to add that to that?
Well, you, the deferrals are good. You'll want to vote on the deferrals. You can then discuss the work session and how you would want to have that scheduled.
Okay.
And then, if you wanted to say, "Staff, here is your direction," that is cool.
Okay.
Okay.
So, on the first item, ZM 18-00001, we have a motion for deferral, a request from the applicant for deferral, a motion and a second. Ms. Creasy, would you please call roll?
All right. Ms. Dow?
Aye.
Mr. Heaton?
Aye.
Mr. Stolensberg?
Nay.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
And Ms. Green?
Aye. That motion carries five, four, I can't count.
Four to one.
Four to one.
Ms. Green, oh, sorry.
Hang on one second. So, on the second application, SP 18-00004, the applicant has requested deferral pending a work session. We've had a motion for acceptance and a second. Ms. Creasy, would you please call roll?
All right. Ms. Dow?
Aye.
Mr. Heaton?
Aye.
Mr. Stolensberg?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
And Ms. Green?
Aye. The motion carries unanimous. So, parliamentary, what could happen is, we could set this work session. I don't know if you want to do it in, after, at the end of a planning commission meeting or set a work session for that. And then, where that would be more of a back and forth, it's kind of a situation where, if you've never been at one of these, we have a back and forth dialogue. At that time, the applicant would then revise their application with information based off of the back and forth that we've had, or the input that he's received from us at that time, and that application would come back to us with the advertisement.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yep.
So, those application modifications, are those still within the scope of that substantial difference standard where they can only revise things downward?
So, you all, so you all would have a conversation in a work session. The applicant would choose the things that they would want to revise. That is, it's their application, they would choose what works for them. Depending on the scoping of that, likely, we're going to be re-advertising. So, then they, then it will be based on the standards of the new application.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, got it, thanks.
Good.
Can I make a quick comment about the vouchers? You all will have to actually set a lower AMI and then specify that you would subsidize it, you know, would have CREJ or the city housing fund subsidize it, you know, for the, for the lower amount versus however you put it, which I can't think of right now. But it's, so the city will pay up to whatever the housing voucher amount is, and then the family will be responsible for the additional amount. And I think the way you said it, at the 80%, it was a cap or something of that nature.
And if it's just the housing coordinator, that the, if the rental rate of the unit was above the 1,179, a two-bedroom, that unit is not eligible for a voucher. And assuming that it was that rate, it would be eligible. But you're right, the family, the family pays some percentage, portion of their income, and the housing voucher fills the rest. So, basically, the developer knocks off, or 20%, and the family pays some number, and the housing voucher pays the rest, depending on, you know, the income. We actually, if we have a small affordable housing complex that my wife and I run, and we have a few people on vouchers there, yeah, they pay anywhere between like $150 and $300 a month, and then the voucher program pays the rest, so.
Bless you.
But I understood that the important distinction, this is something to clarify, it's an important issue, that if the rent, if I build a new development and the rents are all market rate, and they're above that, the 80% AMI number, that those, those units cannot be used with vouchers. That's as I understood it in the housing vote. So, basically, if you, to create an 80% AMI unit, you then create a unit for somebody who makes less than that and still use it by virtue of voucher. We should, I have to chat more about that. I want to make sure I understand it well, too, but it's an important way to get people into diverse neighborhoods that otherwise wouldn't be able to afford it, you know, because of their situation, so.
Yeah, so we can check on that, because we, where HUD funding may not be able to change the funding that the city allocates, we could actually change that restriction if that's the case. But also, in your, in your proposal, if you would just set that you're willing to accept at whatever that AMI is, 20%, 10%, 30%, versus just the 80%.
Mayor Walker, would it, or Lisa, would it be appropriate to have Stacy at this particular work session, to have the conversations, or?
I think that would be a good idea. I think these are all things that are possible, but there may have to be a distinction between what you do in the zoning regulation and then what you supplement your zoning approval with an agreement, like a rent subsidy agreement from the housing fund.
But that would be a part of the rezoning proffer or be a part of the SUP, the special use-
Probably the SUP.
Okay. Is that, do you think that would work, Ms. Mayor Walker?
Yeah, I still just think, even outside of, you know, our housing fund, just if there could be another entity that would be willing to pay just to say that you accept a lower AMI in writing other than 80%.
Right. Is it appropriate for council members to be notified of this work session if they want to attend?
Sure. And if they'd like to attend, we can notice it as a public meeting of the council as well.
I'll let you guys make that call, let us know. Okay. Thank you, guys, for being here, I appreciate it. So-
So, you've accepted both of the deferral requests, and do you want to move to the, to setting a work session for this at this point, or?
Would you want to do some updates and changes, or do you want- Or do you want to set this at a, an agenda time a... After any public hearings, or how would... What, what is the will of the rest of commissioners?
Well, me personally, I would like for, um, staff to look at what we already have on our agenda and plan it accordingly.
Well, yeah, we've got to have a, a work session about, yeah, planning the, yeah.
So, I think right now, um, like, I just think it would be working backwards if we say tonight that we're planning when we're gonna do this work session without looking at what else is on our plate. I mean, not what else is on our plate, but what else is coming up. I've, I've expressed that very often, we overload ourselves.
So, that this is not a work session at the end of a meeting at two o'clock in the morning?
Absolutely, 'cause it will not be beneficial.
I agree, I would appreciate that, too. And I don't know if it's possible to do it in the daytime, you know, during, if you could, during, if you have a set, don't know if it'd be day meetings, or you have your comp plan, because if you tack forty-five minutes onto that one side or the other. Um, I've actually got a meeting, the next planning commission, I've got a hearing in Nelson's, this country store I'm trying to open, so I can't make it the next time around, but I would love to have a daytime meeting, so we're discussing it three in the afternoon and not three in the morning.
Well, all of us work, so I'm not sure that's gonna happen, but maybe we could do a seven P.M. instead of that. And, and tacking all the... But, we're about to have that discussion. I mean, we, these are all potential meeting days. So, we're about to have that discussion, and so, so, I, I mean, Ms. Chrissy, I guess the, the question is, is I think what all of us are, or at least a couple of us are concerned about is on, on the November agenda. If we have six public hearings...
Well, right now, we have one.
Okay.
So, and the deadline's soon approaching, so I, I... Six would be pretty, pretty amazing to get in the next week.
I'm not rushing any submissions, don't worry.
Most of them would be...
So, if you cannot do that, then you could be at the end of G... Of, of November.
Okay.
Does that sound good, if we have one public hearing at the end of November? Add this on to that?
All right. Hold on. I...
Carlton Buse is probably coming back, and I imagine that'll be a pretty intense...
Yeah. We, we've had that as a anticipated, we've just been kind of waiting, so... Um, and we have the East High Street, um, Streetscape Project Preferred Concept.
In November?
Mm-hmm. If you all don't choose to attach it to one of these agendas, then when you get to these discussions here, you're gonna need to say which one you want it attached to, and then we have to figure out if our applicant is available.
Okay.
I can wait around, I think, for the, the three night discussion tonight?
Yes, in a few minutes.
I'll wait here, and I'll come back up when it's my turn, and we can work something out hopefully.
I mean... What you're saying is, i-if the agenda's not packed in November, you'd rather do it at the end as opposed to attach... I mean, because we do have a lot of stuff to cover with our comprehensive plan and all these meetings that we're about to discuss. Is there any will of the commission on this end? Mr. Mitchell?
It'll be pretty easy.
Okay.
Wouldn't it make sense to have a brief work session on this, or back and forth on this, tonight, before he gets to make changes, so that maybe the next one is shorter?
No. I don't...
Well, then, I frankly think maybe a one-on-one between, uh, the applicant and Matt would be of great value, too, because Matt's suggested that he would like to see a little more work on the site plan, a little more definition in the site plan, so the definition you give Matt would help to inform us as well.
You have any thoughts on scheduling that?
I don't think doing it tonight's a good idea.
Right. I agree with that. Uh, okay. Uh, let us have this conversation about, after we have our, uh, presentation on the Long Range Transportation Plan, and then, we're gonna talk real briefly about these comp plan meetings and see where we can fit this. Is that good with you?
That's good.
Good with you? Okay.
Good job.
Oh, my Lord. Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda, uh, is our Long Range Transportation Plan Process Presentation. Do you have a...
I do, I have a presentation.
Presentation popping up? Okay. I am gonna go around.
Yeah, I'm gonna get out for this. I'll follow you.
Scared everybody off?
No, no, thank goodness, the audience.
All right. Um, I'm Wood Hudson. I'm the Transportation Program Manager for the Charlottesville Albemarle MPO, and I just wanted to run through with you all this evening an update on what we're doing with the, um, Long Range Transportation Plan. Um, kind of, I'm gonna go through my presentation, um, pretty quickly, so if you have questions, feel free to stop me at any point in time. Um, I have, um, allotted some time at the end. I'm gonna cover kind of an overview of, and give some background on what a MPO is, uh, go into some details about long-range planning in general, talk about, uh, where we are in the process around our scenari... Scenario evaluation, uh, overview of a little bit of the project list, and then give an update on the, um, Thomas Jefferson Regional Bike and Pedestrian Plan that is also kind of a, a project going on at the same time, and eventually, a component of the Long Range Transportation Plan. So, what is an MPO? Uh, POs are transportation policymaking bodies with representatives of local, state, and federal government and transportation authorities. They're a forum for cooperative decision-making involving key stakeholders and are a federal requirement for urbanized areas with populations greater than fifty thousand persons. Um, decision-making authority rests with the MPO Policy Board. Um, this is kind of an overview of, of the MPO structure. We have the Policy Board at the, um, top. We have a Citizens Advisory Committee. We have a Technical Committee. Whoa! It's moving automatically. And then, um, MPO Staff. The Policy Board includes five members, two from Albemarle, two from Charlottesville, and, uh, one representing the V.DOT Culpeper District. One of the main responsibilities of the Metropolitan Planning Organization is maintenance of the, um, Regional Long Range Transportation Plan. Keep on clicking twice. Um, Long Ra... Uh, Long Range Transportation Plans are twenty-five-year documents. That's kind of our federally stated planning horizon. Um, again, and we have to update these documents every five years. Uh, that's based on our population threshold and guidance from, um, the federal government. These plans really focus on understanding the future transportation needs of our region and are a requirement for receiving federal transportation dollars. Um, they're also a requirement, um, for projects that are going through the state's transportation prioritization process, which is known as SMARTSCAPE. These plans tend to be more regional in nature and really focus on, um, projects that, um, help, um, people and goods move through, around, and between our localities. Plans are required to use a performance-based approach, um, which means they must meet federal requirements addressed in MAP twenty-one, which is, uh, basically the most recent transportation reauthorization bill from the feds. Um, and they must address things including safety, congestion, state of good repair, which is just the, kind of, the state of our infrastructure, uh, freight, access, and transit, uh, goals and objectives, and quantifiable performance measures. Um, we must use a travel demand model, which is a, uh, a, a, a software model to kind of peer into some of the benefits versus, um, kind of weigh, uh, projects. And again, in Virginia, all projects that, um, kind of reach the regional level tend to be funded through the SMARTSCAPE, uh, process and other competitive state proj... Um, processes. Um, relationship between the Long Range Transportation Plan and kind of all these levels of transportation planning at the, um... Stop it. At the, um, the lowest level, we have what's called a TIP, Transportation Improvement Program. That's basically our six-year... It's like the financial document laying out how money has been allocated to essentially approve projects that are gonna get built within the short term. I don't know why six years is considered short-term, but that's what they tell me. Uh, then we have the Long Range Transportation Plan, which kind of nests and, um, um, references, uh, the statewide transportation plan, which the current one is known as V-Trans twenty forty, and then the STIP, which is the state version of the Transportation Improvement Program. Then we have kind of interfacing with the Long Range Transportation Plan, local area plans, comprehensive plans, and corridor plans. So, which brings us to the Long Range Transportation Plan. This is kind of essentially the key steps in developing and updating a Long Range Transportation Plan and indicating where we're kind of now in the process. We've been working with our MPO committees for, um, kind of, over a year on this particular, um, update, and now we're getting into the point where we're, um, have an understanding of, um, our deficiencies and have worked with our, um, local partners to develop, uh, an initial project list and evaluated that initial list, and are starting to, um, understand some of the, um, the results from that anal... Uh, analysis. So, this is kind of a timeline, um, slash, a structure, kind of trying to illustrate because this whole transportation plan, um, process is very complicated. There's lots of different steps in these processes. But essentially, we have, uh, we have a, a larger list of projects, and we have to whittle this down, and we end up with two, um, groupings of projects. One, that is required to be fiscally constrained, which means that we have a, uh, we receive a forecast of how much money we might, we could expect to receive over the next twenty-five years, and we have to develop a list of projects that does not exceed that amount. Then we have a visioning list, which is an unconstrained list, and that's basically where we can, um, uh, list projects that might, might be, um, priorities that are further out, or projects that could potentially get funded by, um, uh, other means. So, this is kind of, uh, another way of looking at how, um, uh, the process works, kind of starting over with a deficiency analysis, um, feeding into, um, developing lists, into, um, scenario planning, cost estimation, and then the constrained lists. Uh, funding-wise, uh, based on, um, an analysis performed by our colleagues at V.DOT and some, uh, work that we've done locally, uh, this is kind of, um, a, a draft of what we could expect to see over the next twenty-five years in terms of, um, uh, funding for, um, Long Range Transportation Plan projects. Uh, this does take into account, um, the past two rounds of SMARTSCAPE, which are kind of a, a, a new component of, um, fiscal for...
This is for the region.
This is for the region. And the region, um, to clarify, is the urban part of Albemarle and, uh, the city of Charlottesville. They are lower than what we, uh, we saw in our twenty forty plan. Yes. Um, any questions about LRTP in general? Anything like that?
I don't know if you're gonna get to it, but, so, if you are, you don't have to answer.
Sure.
Could you expand a little bit on, on public outreach, should this occur?
Sure, absolutely.
I think it was important part, happened to be part of the process.
Yeah. Yeah. Absolutely.
I want us to do some questions when we get back up there, so they're recorded. Yeah. I just wanna make sure we get them beforehand.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, I, I can, um, uh, address that when we get up. Um, so, this is the, uh, result. This is our, uh, initial project list, and, um, it's what we refer to as our round one scenario. And, um, we have, uh, taken these projects and we grouped them into three scenarios, A, B, and C, based on, um, um, similar aspects in terms of the project type. That's the geographic extent of the roadway projects, and this is the geographic extent of the, um, uh, transit projects that were looked at in this, uh, round one scenario. Uh, table of the, um, uh, data results. The key thing here is, um, we're using a base year, which is our current, and then we use what's called a twenty forty-five no-build, which is kind of a, a modeling, um, term, which basically means, what can we expect in the way of conditions if, uh, if no ac... No actions are taken? So, it's kind of the yardstick that we use to, um, uh, compare our scenario results to, as well as comparing our scenario results to each other. And, um, this was included in, um, your packet, and this is a graphical representation of those results, looking at those three scenarios across, um, the various, um, performance measures that, um, were established, uh, for the scenario evaluation. Now, we also, um, had, um, uh, have a set of evalu... Um, um, project review criteria that is separate from this and, uh, looks at just, um, aspects of individual projects as well. So, again, list. Uh, what we're working on now is to take that, um, list and, um, with the help of our MPO committees and, um, working with the MPO Policy Board to come up with a, a draft round-two scenario. So, kind of, working through those projects and doing some, um, um, having some discussions on those. And this is what, um, um, staff have developed as a recommended, um, uh, next step. Yeah? I have, I can... Yeah. I, I only have, like, three slides left, and it's just an update on the bike pad plan. Bike and pedestrian plan, um, is kind of a component of the Long Range Transportation Plan. It feeds a lot of the, um, bike and pedestrian specific recommendations. Uh, this is a, uh, map of the current, current, um, bicycle and pedestrian corridors that are being discussed. Uh, this has been developed through extensive public outreach. Um, uh, we partnered with the Piedmont Environmental Council, who has been doing a lot of, uh, engagement on this, uh, input from staff, um, uh, MPO committees, and, um, a, a whole lot of, uh, folks have, um, put in a lot of, uh, really, really good input to get us to this map. Uh, we're using a, a, a tool called Active Trans, which is, um, oh, um, a tool to help, um, do project prioritization specifically for bike and pedestrian improvements. And these are some of the components that are being used in that tool. And that, um, process is being, uh, evaluated right now, and it'll basically help us understand, um, uh, each of the, uh, projects in the map, kind of in context. And in general, here's the timeline for, um, the bike and pedestrian plan, kind of moving forward and wrapping up hopefully, um, in January. I'd like to just take a moment and plug that we have a, um, Long Range Transportation Plan, um, Jefferson Area Bike and Pedestrian Plan, um, joint, um, public open house on October seventeenth from five-thirty to seven-thirty at our, um, Water Street Center, which is four oh seven East Water Street. It's a lot of information.
Thank you for that. I'm gonna let everybody get back up here, and we may have some questions as this goes forward.
Absolutely.
I appreciate the background on what an MPO is as well.
It helps me remember, because sometimes I even forget.
So, in your packet also were the attachments with the maps showing, um, the two... Well, I guess scenario one was...
Um, tran... There's a transit map and a roadway projects map for scenario one.
Right.
Um, we've also published a online version of the map that is interactive, uh, on the, um, MPO's website, and that's a great way to drill down and see individual project, um, information and all that, because it's... and all that, because it's, it's a lot, a lot of pieces.
So for those of us playing along at home-
Sure.
For the MPO website, you can go to tjpdc.org?
You can go to tjpdc.org, or you can go to campo.org, either or.
Okay. Campo.org, and get these interactive online maps.
Correct.
Y'all have any questions or comments?
Do you want to re-ask your question?
Yes, please. Thank you. I'm sorry about that. I didn't mean to rip-
Yeah, having been kind of involved in the whole process thus far, I feel like I didn't hear you talk as much about the public process to date as I thought you might, because it seems like it's been pretty extensive.
Yeah, absolutely.
Give me a chance to comment.
Thank you very much. Yes, we've been working on this for about a year, and we've done some pretty extensive public outreach and public engagement, specifically for the Long Range Transportation Plan. We've hosted two public open houses. We've done some work on our website that allow people to send us direct comments. And on the bike and pedestrian plan, I mentioned that we partnered with Piedmont Environmental Council, who through a grant that they, that we jointly received, have been able to do extensive public outreach on the bike and pedestrian plan, which has included getting out into the neighborhoods, going to a lot of public events, engaging kind of folks where they're at, rather than having them come to us, which has been very, very successful. Another thing that we've done is we've used an interesting online tool called a WikiMap, which has allowed folks to log on and actually kind of help us identify things that might be impediments for their bicycle commute to work, or what have you. And that's been a really great source of recommendations that have gone into the planning process.
So the three scenarios, in terms of the mix of projects that are in them, or rather the lack of mix, they seem kind of all or nothing. Like, you go with all multimodal, or-
Correct, correct.
You know, how do you evaluate the proposals within each scenario where, you know, possibly like the best third of each, if combined together, would create the best outcome?
That's where the second round of scenarios comes in. We wanted to set a baseline, which was kind of our scenario round-one. If you notice on the screen, I've included the, kind of the draft that the Policy Board is considering on the 25th of this month. And you'll notice that they've gone from being more bifurcated into grouping by similarities to kind of a, much more of a mix of projects.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
This open house, will this be an opportunity for people to take a look at these scenarios and weigh in?
Absolutely.
Great. Any more questions? Before we talk comp plan? Because I know y'all are dying to get on and talk about that.
Mm-hmm.
Well, thank you so very much. I appreciate this.
Thank you very much.
And that open house is October 17th?
Correct. From 5:30 till 7:30, 407 East Water Street. Two hours of validated parking, provided for anybody that parks in the Water Street garage and brings the parking-
Ticket.
Ticket.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. That ends our meeting agenda for this evening, with the exception, before we run off, of having a conversation about our comprehensive plan work session. In reading the bylaws, I can sit work sessions that are not scheduled regularly, but it doesn't do any good if we're not all present, especially when we are trying to finalize this comprehensive plan. In the past work session, we looked at things and we kind of back, looked at back dates, and in order to have a draft completed and ready to give to council in December of this year, which is what our timeline is, these were what I considered as looking and talking and everything, the potential work dates, kind of keeping on a Tuesday, Thursday kind of schedule, without going into other things that people have on Wednesdays or Mondays. Now, certainly, if you all say, I could have met on Monday on that night, we can take a look at those. But I just kind of put this doodle pole together, because it is, I think, important for us to have a critical mass in these meetings to be able to finalize what we've got. As Missy said today, we're going to have the survey kind of results Friday. I encourage you to take a look at those, based off of the categories that we have. If you see something, and I know that Mayor Walker and I have talked about looking at those this weekend, and looking at if there's a different way to sort things out by demographic, or by housing type, or whatever we find there, I think that that's what y'all are looking at, how to easily do that, right? So we may be able to kind of not massage, but filter the data in certain ways. Correct? Am I wrong?
Yeah, so what we get from Survey Monkey, they shoot out a number of charts and graphs. The paper versions, we've had to enter in manually into an Excel sheet. So basically, Bob is going to be using that analytical brain of his to figure out the best way to combine that in such a way that it gives us some information. One of the key things that we do plan to have is a comparison between the demographic data that we had from Phase 1 and this phase, to see what that looks like in comparison, because that's one of the few comparisons that we'd be able to make from the beginning of the process to later in the process. But yeah, there were lots of questions in there, and lots of different ways it could be put together. So we're going to start out with some things that make sense on our end, and then, once you all take a look at that, you may have some other recommendations that we can see if we can manipulate the data into a manner that will get to the potential outcome that you're looking for. Right now, we've got oodles of raw data, and we'll just have to see what comes from that.
So, again, take a look at that, and I think some of this is going to have to be a lot of prep work on our part to be able to look at this data and come back and be kind of ready to go and have conversations. I think we may be close on all the chapters, with the exception of housing and land use. Thank you for those comments on transportation. I don't know if you guys want to one more time. I know you've probably done this a thousand times, but one more time with these changes that were made. Send those chapters to us just one more time, or not. That might be helpful. We take a quick look at that, and we can probably take an hour, if we got, if we pre-look at these chapters, take an hour and kind of finalize all of those, and then we really delve into the housing and land use. Does that sound like something we can tackle? So, Missy, give us the data on Friday. We're going to take a look at that. If there's anything we want to filter out of that, get back to Missy by email, some of this. I mean, we're on the home stretch, guys. We've just got to pull this together, and I know that you two are new, and really we're going to do some catch-up work there. But so, for sure, it looks like our, everybody can be around on the 23rd, which is a regular work session, so that's fantastic that we can all be available that day. And it does look like everybody can be available on the 30th. So that's good. That's two back-to-back. I did put Saturdays in there of a stretch, and it's one of the things, Tania, we talked about, you know, if we could just, you know, if there's a Saturday, we could meet just for a very stretch of time and go, hey, let's hammer this thing out and be done. That's why they're in there. These are by no means let's meet every one of these days, but critical mass. It looks like the next critical mass might be Tuesday, the 6th. That is a voting day, and I didn't think about that before I added that, so just a heads up, if you've got-
It's the first Tuesday, right?
And we would still have the regular second Tuesday.
Then we'd still have the regular second Tuesday.
What's a voting day, then?
Election day.
Election day.
Oh, voting day for the top.
But we should be able to vote early-
We just voted tonight.
I know, but if you guys have some big, major-
I always vote early.
Parties, but we have had in the past, some commissioners not really want to meet on that Tuesday, so I just want to put that out there. But that does seem to be the third critical mass day that we have, followed by Tuesday, the 20th of November, and then the 27th.
Yeah, the 27th is past-
Past our date.
Yeah, we need to-
Are we still looking at 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM for this?
So we are. That is what I put on here. I mean, it is, clearly, as we have these discussions, if everybody says I can stay till 8:00, that's, I know 8:00 o'clock on a school night's hard, but if that's something that you think we could do, we could definitely take one of these nights, we're all here, to sit an extra hour for this SUP and rezoning that we had. Is there a specific date you guys want to do that?
Pretty celebration of democracy to meet on Election Day.
Okay.
You know, what better thing to do?
Well, 5:00 to 7:00, you know, then, yeah, I agree. You know, there may be some people want to do something after 7:00. We have the 23rd, end of 30th. The 27th? November 27th? That is a pretty far piece away.
November 27th.
We've got the 13th, if the, if the-
13th is the one day I can't do.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm also the county board supervisor for my wife's project, so I cannot-
You could have the whole night on the 27th.
Are we going to need it?
Huh?
Are we going to need it? I hope not.
No, but I'm just saying, you, right now-
I would prefer to do it sooner than that, but you guys have priorities. I would like to get this to City Council in January, possible, by January. So that's a question for, you know, we can-
Can it happen?
Get a vote in December, schedule in January, maybe. Depends if it has to be re-advertised.
Yeah.
Likely, since it's three days, two, three weeks.
Well, if it, if it has to be re-advertized, then we won't have time.
Right. I'm hoping that the changes would be such that they'd be more restrictive, therefore not necessarily requiring a new advertisement.
Well, and whether it requires it, or whether the choice is made to have another one, because it's been a long time, that's a whole nother ballgame, too.
What's the timeframe on re-advertising? There's two week notice, or-
There are timelines and guidance there, but if we met on the 27th, he would have to have time to rework the materials. And so he, depending on whether it has to be re-advertized, and whether he has to go back to the neighborhood, there are a lot of ifs there that we just don't know. You know, if it didn't have to go through as many of those things, then January may be a possibility, but we just don't know.
But that would, is there, is there a possibility, if it didn't make it for the December meeting, that we had, and we were met on the 8th of January, he would still be able to make it by the end of the month to council?
We have two meetings at council we have to do.
Oh, that's right.
Well, you could ask them, did you just one? The code allows for one in connection with the zoning matter.
Is that timeline possible? But, I mean, we would, if we did that, we would, it looks like the 8th of January before we could meet.
Well, that's our regular-
That's our regular meeting, but it looks like it wouldn't be back on the agenda till the 8th of January. Is that timeline possible to still get him to council on the, in January?
Maybe.
We'd have to talk with the people that manage council's calendar.
And then if council can't come as a, for the joint hearing, then that bores up the whole schedule. So there's a lot of, lot of-
Council's your problem. I'm just kidding.
Seems like you're my problem.
Me?
Yeah.
I had my vote ready.
I know you did. That's the problem. I wasn't going to work on that. So, yeah, I mean, I said like the 23rd of October is likely to be better for me, but if you got your, you know, comp plan, work session days-
Can, do you all think this is something we could do in an hour?
I hope so. I think we could tailor a pretty narrow list of things about the uses, maybe the affordable housing and the stormwater stuff.
Are we willing to go an extra hour on the 23rd? It is our regular work session, not-
Sure. That's enthusiastic.
No, I'm just looking at my calendar.
I know.
I'm in every jurisdiction in the Jefferson School, in the Jefferson District that we met, from Savannah, Charlottesville, Nelson, Louisa. I got the CIP meeting for here. That just sounds like a little extra, but it's not all about me. It is not all about me.
I know, but we got your opinion on this.
Okay. I would say, um-
How about this? How about this?
Can we squeeze in the other day?
If we can't do, if, how about the 30th?
The 30th would be much, I would commit to an extra hour.
30th is fine, 30th of October.
30th?
Yep.
All right, good. Look at that. 5:00 to 8:00 on the 30th, instead of 5:00 to 7:00. Everybody's here. If everybody comes with all their considerations, because it'll be the same packet, we'll just take what we've got. We've got plenty of time to relook at that and come with the concerns. We can knock this out and out.
Tell them what your specific concerns are, listen to them, and I'll try to tell you what I can address, what I can't, and hopefully can leave them-
So 5:00 to 7:00, we'll do comp plan, and then 7:00 to 8:00, this work session. Is that good? Is that good? Okay, fantastic. We got one day done. The 23rd, we'll meet 5:00 to 7:00 on the comp plan.
All right.
Good night.
Thank you. Thank you for working with us on that.
Brand donuts.
At 7:00 PM?
Let's have the symptoms.
I got chocolate chip cookies at the, where's that box?
Yeah, they're back in there. So then the next time we have is November 6th, 5:00 to 7:00. I guess the question I'm going to ask you guys, and again, you two new guys may not have a, know that, or have a grasp on this yet, is how many more hours do you think we all need to spend to get the housing and the land use ready to go to council?
So, so maybe, maybe we'll talk through a few things that you all need to do, and maybe that will help. So you need to revisit the chapters again, not, not how, excluding community engagement and land use.
And housing.
And housing generally. I'll get back to that in a second. But the other chapters, we can bring those back. Everyone can do another review of that and provide comments for those.
Did we make significant modifications to those chapters at the meeting that I missed?
Not significant. There have been some, but we'll bring back the chapters with those updates, so that everyone's from a level field there.
Yeah, because I felt pretty good about those, the ones that we were going to be at.
So with community engagement, there are a couple of things going on. I understand Plaice is meeting on Thursday and doing some work.
This Thursday?
This Thursday. That is a 12 to 2. The, we have a draft that is almost ready, that I'm going to forward to Ms. Green to review, and if she feels that's something that you all should comment on, then we'll have that out to you all. So at least you have something on community engagement to have as a springboard. And from that last work session that you all did have with Plaice, there did seem to be some general consensus that that was going to be a work in progress, and that you would start in some place, and you would continue to build on that over time. So it would be a living document. So there's potential that maybe this baseline would be something that you could work with. That would be a step perhaps there. At the last grouping of work sessions, the housing chapter, the narrative part was, there were a number of comments that were provided for that, and Stacy has provided those updates, and so we can provide that as well. If you all remember, we still have parts of the, of the, so the housing assessment work that's been done now. There's not more phases to occur with that, and so there'll likely be additional work to be done on that, once that data's in. But we've got about a year until that happens. So we can get to some sort of point with this, knowing- Um, so we can get to some sort of point, um, with this, knowing that we'll have to revisit it again later. Um, with the land use chapter, that's really where kind of the bulk of the work. Um, you all, um, we have this data that we'll be getting to you from the survey that is to help inform the land use, um, aspects, as well as the map, and you all need, will need to take your draft of the map that you formed, took out to the public in May, and, and has been out there for a while, see how this additional engagement may inform that, to see if you need to make any sort of changes to that, and then refine the language based on that as well. So that's why the, getting you all some analysis on the data is, is pretty crucial, because that was the one thing you all were waiting for before really diving into that. Um, now, I, I wish I could foresee what that's going to look like, but we'll know something a little bit more later in the week on that. Um, but we'll really need you all to, to talk through slash let us know what other things would be helpful with that, and that is probably going to be your first discussion point.
Is the, on, on the twenty-third, the first discussion point being the, um, survey results?
I'm guessing that the twenty-third is, that's, that's the first date that you all are...
Coming back together.
Coming back together.
Where we have critical mass.
So are we not meeting on the sixteenth?
Well, I, I, I would be missing you and Jody. I mean, I guess if you all think that it would be worthwhile to meet on the sixteenth, we could do that. Maybe that would, if we want to do some catch-up on the land use and, uh, for our new guys. Okay, so I'm going to do comp plan review.
I'll be coming back from Virginia State that day?
Yeah.
And so traffic is going to play a big factor.
If you can make it, you can make it. That'd be great.
Okay.
I think that is a good kind of thing. I, and we can kind of, if, if we schedule it, we can kind of do what we were talking about doing anyway. I can kind of give you all some historic.
So for that day, that, that is a question mark for me, but Matt and I have already coordinated, and he'll be available that day. Um, one thing that might be helpful on that day for the new folks, as well as, is since it's been a while with everyone else, would, might be for him to run through the mapping, uh, progression, and those who have been around would be able to add in to how you got from...
Yeah.
Where the map is now to where you got on, on the map. I think that, um, Hosea found that to be a, a pretty helpful exercise.
Didn't you already send us something on that? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's what you, she had sent.
The thing you sent, the old map and the new map.
Yeah, but this is, this is actually taking the progression of their maps and the overlay of how they, how they got there.
But that'd be good to see.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. So let's plan on that, the sixteenth.
That, along with kind of, uh, an overview of the, the narrative, um, of, of how you all kind of put together the weeds of what you thought different areas should be, and then how that became, um, text language. Matt, am I going too far?
No, no, I mean, we, we can go over the mapping, all the, the early morning meetings with the mapping, and then the, uh, the...
That's a good idea.
Spreadsheet exercise that kind of, that formed the narrative that y'all are working off of.
That's right.
Another, another thing I'm going to ask is, um, is we'll ask Bob if he would be available at least the first part of that meeting, and then you all could talk about the data, um, that hopefully folks would have a little bit of time to look at, have looked at it, and then maybe have some impressions of other things that might be helpful. Um, and, um, he's got a good ear for that. I'll have to check on his schedule, but, um, that's kind of the inclination that just came to my head right now, so.
No, that sounds, that sounds good, and, and I, yeah, uh, because Jody has been there since the beginning, so, I mean, I think it's a good refresher, and if, whenever you can get there, that's fine. You've been there through the, the whole thing as well, and all the meetings, and, and in fact, Tania and Jody, um, were our...
Kickoffs.
Kickoff speakers on that, so that'd be good. So I'm going to recap really quick. You guys are going to send us all the revised chapters, except housing, land use, and community engagement, where we've got all the final edits. Take a look at those, and then we'll kind of, we can...
We'll get that set up for the twenty-third.
Get that set up for the twenty-third, okay.
And by then, um, you and I may have had the conversation about community engagement, so that might be able to be in the mix.
Let me ask something about these final edits. So that's, so I'm assuming you all have already gone over this once and made editorials and amendments?
Mm-hmm.
And so now, they've taken it back and they've done it.
And they've taken public...
So this is the result of that that I'm going to be seeing.
But it, as, as these things always are, it's never, it's, it's never done un- until council signs off, so if there are comments and thoughts.
Yeah.
Um, but we've, I mean, we, we have had the public looking at them, at these drafts since June of 2017, um, but...
That's why we got to hold Rory back a little bit.
He's, he's already been in it.
Rory has had, Rory's comments are in there.
Or at least summarily rejected.
He's going to try to push that through one more time.
Oh, my goodness.
So we're going to be getting a lot of email information coming up.
Well, we will work to package it.
Right.
Um, because I know that getting things and little drubs can be kind of complicated. Um, so, um, we'll, we'll get something for this Friday. Usually we have the packets out to you guys on Tuesdays, but, and we're just talking about the packet now, so can't do it today. Um, but the, the plan will be to have things that we can advance, so that, uh, folks have the opportunity to review. So just keep in mind, we're planning a packet the same day we're planning a meeting, like, constantly, and we've actually been kind of in this pattern for, for months here. Um, so, uh, you know, just, just keep that in mind.
Lisa?
If we had to schedule a Saturday work session?
Mm-hmm.
Um, my last regularly scheduled youth football game is November the third.
Okay.
So after...
So I see the seventeenth of, uh, from nine AM to two PM. We have everyone but, and, and Rory and I are like, eh, okay, if we have to.
I think I'm only if we have to at nine AM. At ten AM, I'm good.
At ten AM, you're good? So it'd be Hosea who can't attend that day, and, uh, and you have marked you can't attend that day on the Saturday.
Because I had to check my schedule.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. So that's a potential. Is there, is, is, is that the all-day thing, you can't meet, Hosea?
Yeah, I'm not here.
Okay, okay. If we get to a point where we're, we may have to do that.
Oh, go, yeah.
If we get, i- if we get to the end of, like, the month, and we're like, there's no way we're getting through this, we may have to, so keep that kind of on your pencil down.
So the, the, the drop dead day to get it to council by the deadline is what?
The twentieth.
Twenty?
December twentieth?
You, so you all have November twentieth, the last date to get data together, because we need the next couple of days, um, well, the next couple of days are Thanksgiving, but we will have to get that back to council packaged by the twenty-seventh.
I accept them the three things. Go ahead, sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Um, we have to get the package materials for the December meeting to, to, uh, for review by the twenty-seventh of November for the December seventeenth meeting, um, which is the one that they have scheduled to review the materials. Um, so, um, yeah, so we kind of had to backtrack from when they said that they wanted the draft, and they're not scheduling this for a hearing at this point in time. They want the draft to review it, um, provide us additional direction. I'm not really sure what...
So they could kick it back to us again.
Uh, yeah, we, we haven't had a hearing on it here, so it's going to come, it's going to come back. Um, and potentially, hopefully, it will come back with, uh, with the more specific directions. If, if, if there's a, if there's a section they want us to do something with, then, you know, potentially we do that, or, um, I, I'm not really sure, but that, they have asked that we have a draft to them on that, for that meeting, and that's what we're working towards, but...
Is it possible for us to, once we get this, and I'm sorry, I'm interrupted, but is it possible for us to have these chapters ready to go, and we send it to them the seventeenth, and they come back and say, "Okay, all of this is good, except for these things. We want you to revise, we want you to relook at these"? Can we go to public hearing with, say, certain chapters and just kind of move that along that way, or is that just not?
Yeah, you know, um...
That's a great idea.
Lots of places do discrete comprehensive plan amendments, so you all, you, there's lots of different ways you can do it. Some places do a, a piece of it on a rolling basis every year.
Mm-hmm.
Other places consider comp plan amendments proposed by rezoning or other applicants, so...
Yeah, I mean, in the middle of all of this, we're going to have a conference of plan amendment for the East High Street streetscape, um, request, and my guess is that if we send guidance to council for the December seventeenth meeting, noting that, you know, we, that the commission, uh, you know, this is just an example, but the, the commission would like to take any chapters that you all are satisfied with to public hearing X period of time, and then the, the other items, uh, we would like direction on the timeframes and what you'd like to see. I mean, so anything that we can send to them in the way of the things that we would like direction, um, from them on, that will, um, they won't turn us down.
Okay.
All right.
It can be amended at any time. You don't have to wait until something's perfect, or you don't have to wait to see what might happen before you just pick a path, because you can amend it.
Well, so if we get...
You can turn around and amend it immediately after you amend it.
And right now, we're going to keep it in the very plain text form, um, until we get to some sort of critical mass, and then we would work on a formatting. So it's not looking pretty right now, but that's, we're not concerned about that at this piece. We'll, we'll get there once we get through the content.
Okay, so we could get back all the chapters except for the ones which we, you know, community engagement, housing, and land use, and they go, "Okay, these are fine, not much", and we could turn around and say, "Okay, let's bite the apple one small bite at a time, and let's take these..." How do you guys feel about that? Make it feel like we're getting something done. I feel like we've done nothing but spin wheels.
Get some points on the board.
Well, yeah, and we're also serving the council with what they need, not, perfect is the enemy of good if we, you know...
So, will that help? Okay, all right. Let's just stick with that right now. I had, I don't want to muddy the waters. So the sixteenth, twenty-third, thirtieth, sixth, potentially the seventeenth and the twentieth. Mm-hmm, okay. I had a thought today that I asked Missy about, and she was gracious enough to find out, because Rory made some comments. I know he likes data, but I think this would be good for us to have, um, so the... In any event.
Yeah, the, the first one is the build-out analysis. That's part of the current comprehensive plan. This was one that we did internally, um, and it gives you some general data based on 2013.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, that, uh, that gives you general data on what a build-out would be under the current zoning, um, and, uh, the current zoning by right and the current zoning by SUP. Um, so, and it gives you the methodology that was used internally on that. Um, Brian did, uh, a bunch of the heavy lifting on that, and he is a data guru as well, so, um, you know, if you have any questions on that, he can definitely help you out with that. The other document, um, Lisa had asked me more specifically about the, um, number of units that we need, and at what price points, and if there was anything on the types at this point in time. So the, this is extracts from the housing needs assessment data that we have. That gives you some idea of, um, what rents are, what, um, what types of units are, or the price points of units that are needed. Um, she noted that it was a much more difficult to say, "We need X single-family, X duplexes, X multifamily," because it doesn't quite fall that way, um, but she felt like this part of the data would be helpful. Um, we've got the full study. I've sent links to you guys on, but figured that taking out a few kind of key parts of that may be a little easier to digest at this point, so.
Right. So I kind of thought about this as, as we look at the land use plan, and we're trying to look at housing and density, and the types of housing, and the numbers that we need, and you had mentioned something like a 2045 plan, or we do, we do long-range transportation planning at, at 2045, and kind of looking at a goal. But also, we have all of these rezonings and special use permits, and we keep getting, you know, "I got two bedrooms here, two bedrooms here, two bedrooms here." Well, is that what we need, right? And at what point do we already have so many of these two bedrooms already rezoned, just haven't been built, or in the pipeline to be built, and are we rezoning for two bedrooms, and that's not what we need anymore, because we've got things in place? And I don't know. I don't know the answer to that, but I thought this data might help. I mean, do we need more three bedrooms? Do we need more single-family? Do we need, I'm, I'm going to say this now hung and cheek, do we need more multi-million dollar homes?
Well, and I think...
I'm kidding.
I think the, the answer all along is, is yes. We need a little bit of everything in order to meet the different needs of the community. I think that's one of the key things that have come out of the study is, is that we've got a lot of housing being filled by folks that would make a different choice if that choice was available, and that's affecting our housing in all different kinds of ways. Um, so we need units. We need lots of units. We need units at all price points. Um, you know, the, the data that we have from this first round from the housing assessment gives us more help on, on kind of honing in on some of those needs that we have. Um, but, uh, you know, some of it is, uh, um, you know, noting, I was talking with Stacy about, you know, the types and numbers and, and those kinds of things, and she said, you know, a lot of this, regardless of, um, of, uh, price points, comes down to the preferences of, of people, um, and, and what suits their needs, which could be very different things for different people that may look similar.
But we may have some of that information off the data we collected with these surveys as well. I'm just thinking, I, I often look at these things and go, you know, we hear from Belmont with that neighbor, the by right density, uh, uh, property that, uh, is over, across from Moss on, on, uh, and, and the four hundred and twenty-eight two-bedroom units. Well, at a certain point, are we at the saturation point for the two-bedroom units, and do we need to say, "Fine, we'll increase the density to, I don't know, whatever, sixty dwelling units per acre, but we need three-bedroom units"? That kind of situation. I think it's just good for us to have that data to be able to go. What do, what do we need? What is the, what is the, the need, the actual community? I don't know. That was where I was thinking, so I, more paper for you to look at. Sorry about that.
No, no.
So be ready for emails. Thank you all for sticking through this. Any questions or comments before we adjourn?
Uh, is this zoning capacity analysis online somewhere, or is this also brand-new?
No, it's not brand-new. The, if you go to the, uh, 2013 Conference of Plan, you go to the page that has all the appendices, you go to the land use section, it says build-out analysis, and this is what you'll find.
So this is as of 2013?
Correct.
Gotcha, okay.
The current zoning, by right.
By right and special use permit.
That's already approved.
So we'll get another one of these after we finish the conference of plan, or the zoning rewrite?
Um, we, mm, we'll have to figure that out. Yeah, we, we actually can't really, well, we wouldn't be able to update this per se until we change the zoning, because this is based on our current zoning. So once we change the zoning, it would make sense to have some sort of analysis update.
That makes sense. And, uh, would it be possible to get the Excel models from the housing needs assessment bonus height analysis, like, that are presented in table format in the PDF?
She's got too much time, obviously.
Absolutely.
It's like the three-day seventeen or something.
Okay, how about you, you send me an email of exactly what you're looking for, and I'll see if we can get it.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
All right, guys, thank you so much.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn to the second Tuesday in November.
So moved. So moved.